Public comment, if any. We'll hear from our town manager in terms of his weekly update. We have a proclamation tonight regards the Americans with Disabilities Act. We have a number of action items, including a discussion again of the hazard mitigation plan that we discussed in our last meeting with a series of inputs that I and I'm sure others had made in terms of improvements and corrections. I will approve a proposed fiscal 18 Board of Selectmen schedule. We'll review a proposed Redding-Wakefield real estate sale. We'll review the town manager's FY '17 goals and likewise draft goals for FY '18. We'll establish the town manager's evaluation process. We have a discussion on the candidate survey that's come before us a couple of times. It's now got our collective inputs and is in a more robust form than it was initially. We have a change of officer at Chili's, approval of minutes from the 13th, and then we'll return to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to bargaining approximately 9:35. With that, I'll accept any liaison reports. Andrew?
I don't have any per se. I did go to a couple of meetings with you and an HTRAC meeting, which we can talk about or you can present, and the FinCom meeting that four of us went to, and we're going to be discussing that. So, nothing else.
You'd like to talk more about the HTRAC. Go ahead.
It was in the library, a small group of people, I think five or six people, and they brought up some of their, sort of, their desires, and I'll let them speak. I don't want to speak for them. But I think they concisely relayed what they were looking for, and you invited them to come to a meeting at some point.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
I was at the FinCom meeting as well. Nothing else to report.
John?
Well, I do have a small update on the Recreation Committee, although I'm seldom able to meet their meetings because they often at the same time we do. But there's some proposals in front of them really tied to the Birch Meadow master plan. Little League is interested in donating and upgrading, you know, current baseball cage and also add another one. All good stuff, as far as that's concerned. And so, we're going to actually, I'm going to be meeting next week with the Birch Meadow Subcommittee to have some discussions about that and see how it all matches. So, that's kind of ongoing, you know, really recreational items more than anything else. So, down at Memorial Park, one of the things that's happened is that the bandstand had to be cordoned off. I don't know if you've noticed, if anybody's noticed that or not. The, it's in decay, you know, and it's, you know, there's been several looks at this thing over time, and it presents some real tripping hazards, you know, for people that are there. It's no small project. I mean, it's quite a big project, actually. But, so, we're gonna, you know, we'll be talking about that, too, and I'll bring back your report and see where we are. So, that's really all I have for now.
Thank you, John. Andrew said he and I both met with the Human Relations Advisory Committee. The subject matter likely revolved around the selectmen's policy under which the HTRAC is advisory to the Board of Selectmen and ways that we could go forward, and particularly clarify how that board and our board seek to work together going forward. Likewise, I attended the same Finance Committee meeting as Barry did on a couple of additional transfers of money to help with some year-end expenses, fairly formulated stuff. With that, I'll open it up for a public comment, if any. Anyone for a public comment? Just raise your hand and, very good. Bob, any comments?
Just two. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, an update on state aid. You've seen documents flying out of the state in the last week or so. The state aid number that's coming out of Conference Committee and going to the Governor's Desk is 102,000 below our estimate of 2.5 percent. That's something we already knew at April Town Meeting and factored in, so there's essentially no problem there. State assessments are up 54,000. So, it's interesting. We assumed up 2.5 percent for each state aid is up less than 2 percent. State assessments are up 11 percent. So, that went the wrong direction on both. But again, that number is rounding error from what we had assumed, so it's fine. I have to say that, given the difficulty of the budget process, and I have not reached out to legislators in nearly a month, and they have had no time, I'm sure, for anything other than the budget, I really do appreciate the fact that the budget that was hammered out left local aid intact. Clearly, that should have been and could have been and would have been prior years, but on the table. To balance the budget with such an amazing revenue shortfall that sort of got realized last minute is a really remarkable thing. And I have not read any analysis of the budget. I've just read through line items, and it would appear to me that they have really reduced a lot of social services, except for veterans. That was the one group that costs went up, and they protected a lot of health insurance lines that I think they really enjoyed about. So, you know, to protect municipal local aid in such a budget was really certainly very welcome and very much appreciated. The other is some very sad news, not necessarily Redding, but still very important. We've been working with Woburn over the last couple of years as kind of a sister city working on a library project. They're a couple of years behind us. And today, I'd just like to ask for a quick moment of silence. One of the construction workers actually died on site. He was hit by a boulder, and OSHA is now on-site investigating. And that hearkened back to an incident that happened during our project where the project manager was hit by a piece of plywood that flew off the roof, and it just grazed his foot and put him in a cast for six or eight weeks. And, you know, he said, "I could have been easily killed." So, you know, we talk about public construction, and gee, it's terrible how it goes so slow and it costs too much money. There's worse things that can happen. And if you will, I'd just like to ask for a moment to recognize that worker, and certainly we send out our sympathies to him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. With that, we'll move to our first article for the evening, is the Proclamation for the Americans with Disabilities Act. John, if I could get that for you?
Sure.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah.
Move that the Board of Selectmen declare July 26, 2017, as Americans with Disabilities Act Day. I have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a second. I'll read the proclamation for those at home. Americans with Disabilities Act Day, whereas July 26 marks the 27th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and where the Town of Redding celebrates the contributions that people with disabilities have made and continue to make, and the Town renews its commitment to upholding the nondiscrimination principles of the ADA, and where many organizations locally, regionally, and nationally work tirelessly to support citizens with disabilities, and those organizations deserve the recognition, respect, and support of their communities for this service. We, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Redding, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2017, as Americans with Disability Act Day in the Town of Redding, and urge all citizens to support the efforts of the Independent Living Center of the North Shore and Cape Ann Incorporated, which is the voice of all persons with disabilities and their families. This proclamation is an acknowledgement of the rights of all persons with disabilities under the ADA and their daily activities, struggles, and triumphs here in the Town of Redding. So, that's the proclamation. Is there anyone here to receive this tonight, Bob?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the Board? If not, all those in favor of the proclamation? Or zero? Guys who'd like to go ahead and start signing? That'd be great. Next, we'll move on. While that's going around, we'll move on to the...
Hazard mitigation?
Yeah, we're a little bit ahead of time.
That's okay.
In our meeting of two weeks ago, we had a discussion on what I'd call an early version of the mitigation plan, and a number of us put forth improvement suggestions, and I believe we've got a version of the improved plan tonight, as well as somebody here to...
Right. Julie and a rep from...
Oh, hi, Julie. Let me see you. Sorry.
That's why I atticated there.
Yes. Why don't you come on up and...
We have Martin Hill's ready room at MAPC.
Oh, Martin, thank you for coming.
Yeah. I like to be from here, actually.
I do, too. It's the preferred seating.
Yeah. I'll sign that for Dan.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, this is 2.0 we're looking at here tonight, yeah?
Yes. Well, actually, I guess some change, Julie had passed some comments. Sam Cleaves, who's at MAPC, who's the author of the plan originally, made a series of changes based on those comments that we got, I guess, last week. I think maybe that's what you have here.
Yes.
But then Julie passed on to me some additional comments yesterday.
Yeah, my bad. I had realized I'd been away all the Fourth of July.
No problem. I actually, today, was working at incorporating a lot of those into the plan, which is still back, that further revised version is still back on my computer.
Okay.
So, I was literally working on it when I left to get into the traffic jam, becoming here from Boston. But, you know, we can make a lot of those changes. I guess I would just point out that where this plan is in the stage of its evolution is that it's been approved by FEMA, and that really is the brass ring, getting FEMA's approval. So, we have to be a little bit careful about how many further changes you make to the plan, because once they've approved the plan, you're actually not really supposed to make any further changes to it at that point. In practice, we've had this happen before, though. I think some editorial changes, some formatting changes, corrections of like names and dates and that kind of thing is fine. Just substantive changes to, you know, analysis or recommendations in the plan would be something that is, at this point, now that the plan's been approved, and I should maybe point out that the significance of getting FEMA's plan approved for you, it's a five-year approval process, so you actually are renewing the original plan you had a few years ago. And during that five-year period, then, when you have an approved plan, FEMA will then make the town eligible for a series of FEMA mitigation grants. So, it's a grant eligibility kind of incentive that they hold out for having a plan approved. It's not a mandate. You don't, it's not one of these things, you have to have one of these plans, but it's a good, it's a good practice to have for the town to assess its hazards, and it's a good, grant eligibility is a good thing to have. So, you know, over the course of the next five years, if something comes up, you want to apply for FEMA grants. They will pay for drainage and other improvement projects if they've been shown to be a problem up to 75 percent of the cost.
Does that include payments a priori, or is it after an event? This is mitigation, so I...
This is mitigation. It doesn't, if you've identified an area, and this plan actually does identify some areas from past experience, that is a problematic area, and there is a project that would mitigate that, you don't have to wait for the next storm to say, okay, because you've already based your analysis on past storms that have already happened or past events that have already happened.
We hope that would be the answer, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
What's the interval on such grants from...
Well, there's two kinds of grants that typically have been available for projects. One is an annual appropriation from Congress called the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant, or PDM. I love that word, pre-disaster. It makes you sit on the edge, you can see it wins the disaster company.
You can find the pre-stock increase.
Exactly. Yes, exactly. That has traditionally been appropriated as part of FEMA's national budget every year. Now, of course, priorities are changing in Washington, so we're not sure how that will fare, but it's been in place for many, many years. And many communities across the whole country rely on that grant program for, you know, serious matters of mitigating hazards. So, we're hoping that even with some of the shifting priorities in Washington, that this program will still continue on.
You said serious, so how big a number are serious projects?
You know, the projects that get approved really can, there's quite a wide range of dollar amounts. They can be a small project for 40,000 or 50,000. That would be on the small end. They can be way into the six figures in some cases. The trick is that the cost that a project would put on the federal government, which is 75 percent, has to be justified by showing that there's an equivalent benefit. And so, when you apply for the actual grant for a project, you have to do an analysis that shows a cost benefit. A lot of federal programs use that kind of an approach. They want to know that a federal dollar spent will save at least a dollar in avoided costs or damages. So, it's a wide range of costs, and, you know, the bigger the cost of the grant, the bigger the lift is to sort of document what the benefit would be.
An ROI calculation, a return on investment kind of a thing.
Exactly. That's right.
John, do you have a question?
Could I have one more thing? There's a second grant I was going to say. That's the annual one. Then there's called PDM, Pre-Disaster Mitigation. The second grant is called Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. There's a lot of alphabets with HMGP, and also Flood Mitigation Assistance, FMA. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is episodically available only after a disaster, a national disaster is declared. So, for instance, I think the last one we had declared might have been the tornadoes that hit Western Mass, and then there was an ice storm before that, and then we had big flood. There were a few of them back in 2007 and 2010, big flood events. Every time a disaster reaches a threshold where it gets to be a declared disaster, in the aftermath of that disaster, a certain amount of dollars are released to this Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And the amount released is a formula that's based on a percentage of the relief dollars that are paid out in damages for that event. And the way Massachusetts manages this, these are federal dollars that then are managed in the state by the Mass Emergency Management Agency, MIMA, so our state counterpart to FEMA. The way they manage that, if the disaster occurred in, let's say, Hampshire County, the tornado, they don't limit the eligible grantees to that county. Anyone who has a good project statewide, once that disaster's declared and the HMG grant is made available, they make it available statewide, because they know that it's kind of random when and where disasters occur, but we, longer term, we have needs in all parts of the state. So, that you can't predict. It'll, the next, you know, right now, there's not an HMG, we haven't had a declared disaster in a couple of years. I call it the silver lining grant. It's like we get a disaster, and then there's a grant that's made available.
John?
Yeah. Just as a curiosity, and we, I don't know if this information is available, Julie, or possibly you have it, but, so this will be, I guess, the second mitigation plan. Our first one was five-plus years ago.
Right.
How many grants have we applied for, and how much have we received?
None and none.
Okay. So, it's a good value proposition for us.
Andrew? So, follow-up to that question, having gone through this report, are there any, it seems like flooding was the number-one issue.
It was just common in most of the communities around here.
And are there any projects around Redding where it may be a good fit to apply for a FEMA grant for this hazardous, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, where the benefit may...
The place to start looking at are the flood problem areas that the plan identifies, to see if, out of that, and the details of what kind of a project might be useful would come from your engineering and public works folks. They would have that kind of knowledge. But this plan is a good sort of priority list to say, here's where you look, here's to point your attention in this direction. It's not to say that you couldn't have something else, but hopefully, if there's a problem that was serious enough, it was, it was...
It was in there.
It was in there as identified on the list, right. So, this is pre-planning to actually have an actual project proposal, but it definitely screens the possible areas and gives you some places to point your attention.
Barry?
Actually, a question merely for Bob. Wasn't there, we were dealing with an issue a couple of years ago with some beavers creating some flooding down by...
Walkers Brook.
Walkers Brook area.
Yeah.
That's not a disaster-related issue, but would something like that fit into something that we can apply for the grant, a grant for?
I guess I would say generically, because the beavers come up in almost every town we work with. It's a common, common problem. And, yeah, it's not exactly a disaster, but it could cause a flood. It could exacerbate a flood. Then, if you have high waters and a big rainstorm, instead of the flow going where it should naturally go, it may back up, and that may flood people's basements, or depending on what's nearby. So, the answer to the question, usually those kinds of projects aren't really rise to the level of a FEMA grant. And the other problem, as probably folks know who's ever tried to deal with it, it's a highly regulated area to do anything about the beavers. You've got a lot of wildlife regulations that kind of, you know, restrict how much you can do about that, which is a frustrating situation for those that live near these areas.
I'll open John's question. What steps would we need to undertake immediately if we wanted to take the Fairfield Avenue project, for example, and use that as a subject matter of a grant? Is that on us, Town of Redding? Is it something MAPC helps with?
The grant for an actual project would be the town, and you would wait until the next time a grant is made available, is announced. Although, if you really were serious about it, you might start doing some pre-planning for that, to gin it up a little bit. But the next time that there is, we expect the next grant opportunity will be this next round of annual pre-disaster mitigation, barring having another storm that releases HMGP grants.
We expect that to break first.
The problem is, it's like asking the question about anything in Washington now. You know, all the traditional rules and timing are kind of off, out the window, and it's hard to know.
But it's first in, best dressed wins, I guess, right?
It's not so much first in. I mean, there will be a grant, when the grant is made available, there will be a period of time, so, you know, put in your applications between this date and that. Everyone who puts in their application in that window of time, you know, has an equal chance. It's more the merit of the project and that cost benefit analysis.
How long is that window of application typically?
It's usually about six or eight weeks.
Is that enough time to draft such a draft by grant for us?
That's why, if you're serious about a project, it's probably good to start to do some preliminary work on it, to start, to get it a little more, you know, prepared for that, because it can be a fairly quick, the real estate, actual time period.
Do you have an opinion as to the hit rate of such applications? Is it 1 in 10? If you, just statistically...
It's probably better than 1 in 10, but it's also not, you know, 80 or 90 percent of them do not get funded.
It's not 1 in 3, and it's better than 1 in 3.
It is a difficult grant application. It really all comes down to the cost benefit, for the most part. A few other things to think about, because you're usually doing work in rivers, streams, floodplains, wetlands, that's a regulated area, so the work you might want to do would also need some permitting, often through the Conservation Commission, through the Wetlands Act, or maybe some other water management permitting. So, that's another sort of requirement that you sort of have to check off, besides having a cost benefit, is that if there is any permitting needed, you're not running up against, you know, a blind spot with that. And the third thing, it's probably not as common, but you have to sign off on whether the project you're proposing would have any impact on historic resources, like on the National Register. And that won't happen in most cases, but say there was an old dam with an old mill or something, that could be entered into the equation.
And in your experience, where you've seen successful outcomes, is it the type of project that drives it more than, for example, if it's a chronic issue that's going to be remediated versus, say, a nuisance issue?
Yeah, the chronic issue's going to have a higher chance of, the greater the threat, the greater the hazard, and then the more effective your proposed project would be at mitigating that hazard, the better chance you'll have this.
The towns that have done a good job and kind of knocked off all the chronic ones are actually in second place on this one. It sounds like the ones that have chronic problems.
In a sense, if some other towns have already gotten the low-hanging fruit in their own communities, that's right. That's very possible.
Okay.
Just for the Board, Julie and I can work on the fact that we have three large enough projects in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund...
That's a good idea.
...to be planned as capital. There's $100,000 a year that deals with sort of the low-hanging fruit.
Right.
But these three projects are large enough, and they have flooded residents and businesses that we deemed them worth putting in. And as we've discussed in the budget process, if we're going to do all of them at once, $40 a household's not going to hold anymore. So, looking at a grant for this would certainly make sense.
The follow-up from Bob's question, if you have town money, let's assume for the moment we have the revolving fund monies, and we have, we're successful on a grant. I assume there's a color of money discussion, where you can use these dollars over here, but only these dollars over here, and you've got to keep it all spread.
Well, what there is, if you get a FEMA grant, it will pay for 75 percent of the cost of whatever the project is. You still have to pick up 25 percent from whatever, and they don't care what source you use for that 25, except that I think they might make a restriction on that other 25 percent being other federal dollars.
Yeah.
But if you have Stormwater Fund money or any, just capital budgeting money that can meet that 25, that's all you need.
Back to you.
You can always put in more than 25 if you think you can only get so much of a grant, but that's the minimum.
So, your opening comments were on the severity and magnitude of proposed changes. The ones I saw were largely formatting and appearance. They didn't necessarily change.
Right. I think we can make most of those changes. I've already worked on, well, Sam Cleaves worked on one round of changes based on the comments we got last week.
Okay.
And I literally got from Julie yesterday an additional list, and today, I was actually cranking through most of those.
I was embarrassed to say, oh, my goodness, I forgot to do this. So, I did it on Saturday. Any other comments, John?
I have just a few questions, and, you know, I'd like to follow the bouncing ball of what this really is for a minute. When is the last time that this granting window opened?
Last, about a year ago.
So, is this a...
Around May of last year.
So, is this an annual thing, or about an annual thing, or whenever they get around to it?
It's about an annual thing, but for some strange reason, it doesn't occur in the same time of year, the same month every single year. I think it really does depend on when Congress, first, Congress appropriates the money, and then it takes time for it to actually administratively funnel through the agencies and FEMA, and it actually goes through two steps. It's federal money coming from FEMA, which FEMA turns over to the state, and then MIMA is actually the entity that puts the grant out in the streets and informs the towns, hey, there's a grant available.
So, the process really is two agencies that we'd be dealing with.
You only have to deal with MIMA on the grant itself. In other words, MIMA does, is the front-facing agency to the communities. If you were going to apply for a project grant, you would be sending it to MIMA. MIMA, in turn, would be packaging everything they get in the whole Commonwealth and giving that to FEMA.
They're not the ultimate decision makers.
No, they're not, but they would screen projects by FEMA's criteria and let you know, you know, that's just not going to fly, or you need, they'll actually kind of be in your corner, but often say, you know, make these changes before we submit it, it'll do better, that kind of thing.
John?
So, to continue the questions I have about this, everything I've listened to so far over the last two meetings indicates to me that this is a insurance policy that we're buying, because we're spending money on this. This is something that we're paying money for. And furthermore, it sounds like, at the local level, we have been doing our own planning around areas that are, you know, troubled areas, that we know are troubled areas, that we address capital issues when capital's available. It's not as though we're unaware of these issues, and that's being done at a local level. And that's part and parcel of what our staff does and, you know, the team that's on board. So, back to my point about this. So, we spend a premium every five years on an insurance policy that we may or may not ever be able to use, which I understand is how insurance policies work. But I just want to be clear in my own understanding of the cost-benefit analysis of what we're really doing here. We're doing, we're spending, now, I'm going to guess, $25,000 on the consulting work from MAPC. I'm guessing we spent that once before, or some number similar to that. Our own input is looked at, but really can't be fully embraced, because there's a federal agency that says what this has to look like, and I kind of get that, too. So, I guess the question becomes for me, in five years, five-plus years, we've never applied, and there are considerable hoops at two different levels. Once you do apply, to win a grant, it doesn't happen all the time. There's some number between 20 percent and some other percent that says you've got a shot at this. And so, this really is putting us in the club of what may happen someday somehow, and maybe we get something. You know, from the pure standpoint of mitigating these kinds of issues, it sounds like our local team is on the case.
This doesn't help any of the work we do. It might help plenty of some of the work, and it's probably less of a insurance policy and more of a lottery. You're just bought a lottery ticket.
Yeah, it's more of a lottery than an insurance policy. I agree with that, John.
It might pay off, but it likely won't.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, and this is a sunk cost.
It is.
We've spent this money, okay? Whether it was a good value or a bad value, I'm not here to judge, nor do I want to opine on that. I'm glad that you guys were very responsive to some of the issues that we had, are really up through today, so I really appreciate that. And our work with MAPC over an extended period of time over the last number of years has been exceptional. So, this isn't a question in that area. I just say out loud that when this comes up the next time, let's get in front of it instead of behind it and make a value judgment of how we're spending our money. That's all.
It's very fair to say. I guess I would only add to that whether you want to think, I think I've always thought of these plans as having two benefits for the community. One is, is, you know, the right to get into the lottery or the insurance pool.
Yeah.
The other is the intrinsic value of really taking stock from A to Z of all of your hazards, figuring out what you're already doing, where the gaps are. It's a planning process, which hopefully has its own some intrigue. Now, for a town that's further ahead along already, it sounds like Reading is, maybe the incremental improvement that that gives you compared to other towns isn't as much, but I still think it has that inherent value, getting it all down in one place, giving you a blueprint for where you want to go. And the other thing I'll add is that what you're talking about, how you're already looking at capital programs, that's exactly what these plans are intended to do, to not just be a plan, but to take the pieces that are in this plan over time, over the five years, and integrate them into your capital planning, your public works-
It's a mapping strategy.
Right, and all of that. It's kind of lays a blueprint out for you.
Yeah, and I do appreciate those comments, and I'm not suggesting that I would vote against this because I'm not. I'm going to vote in favor of getting it done because we've spent the money and here we are, and we're in the lottery. So, that's great. I'm just saying out loud so that maybe we would have some institutional memory that let's be a little further in front of this and, you know, and make a value judgment going forward, and let's be aggressive about how many times we enter the lottery when we have good cause to do so.
I'm very receptive to that line of thinking. Many of us in this building are from the private sector, so we have a little bit of a different take. When I first got here, one of the first things I did was to stop sending out tax bills and personal property tax bills for things that cost more than the stamp.
Right.
And I've met with resistance.
Cost benefit, right?
Well, we've had this discussion.
So, I totally understand that line of thinking. Another thing we've stopped in the last few years, as with me as town manager, is we don't apply for thousand-dollar grants that cost us five hundred dollars to apply for.
Makes no sense.
It's just not sensible.
Right.
So, we're a lot more careful. We're not looking to win. We're not looking to win the thousand dollars to say victory. We're looking at the real economic-
Yeah, it's something that's going to really have impact, and this is not, my comments shouldn't be-
No, I totally get it.
Shouldn't be interpreted as being negative because they're not. It's just thinking about the analytics, it's kind of, unfortunately, that's the way my brain is like.
You know as an operations guy that there are people who look at your cost and my cost of wages as a sunk cost. You're free, so let's go get that thousand dollar. You and I don't look at it that way.
You're right.
It's an opportunity cost to do it with that time, you can spend it somewhere else. John?
Yes, Andrew.
So, Bob has outlined a number of projects, flood control projects already that are not cheap-
Yeah.
...and would be worth getting, what did you say, seventy-five percent funding on. And since we've already gone through the process, you know, with the lottery, you can't win if you don't play. And I spent maybe nine years in academia and a one-in-10 shot for a grant is pretty damn good. So, FEMA actually has a flood mitigation assistance grant program that opens, the application period is from August fourteenth through November seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. So, maybe if the projects that we already have in the pipeline, obviously, you're right, if it's a ton of work to do and it's just not going to be worth the benefit analysis-
It could have been work we've already done though, so it's worth our while to look.
I mean, if you have property damages from previous floods that you could drum up some number for, just a thought, and they give information on how you apply to the grants.
That's a good idea though, Andrew. Is there a chance, is any of this reimbursement, where you've already spent the money, the projects-
No, they won't reimburse for money you've already spent. You have to, it has to be a project that you spend money on after they approve the grant.
You can't do the right thing and fix it and deal with it later.
I know, it's-
Terms of the game.
There's a lot of things about this.
Ready, fire, aim. You have to have the projects on the shelf ready to go.
Can I just ask a question? How does this process compare to a disaster declared on a snow emergency? We've been through six appraisers with FEMA since the two-year ago snowstorm and are just about ready to finish it up. So, you know, FEMA by no means makes this easy. And I'm just curious, is that kind of disaster money a different funnel completely?
It's a different funnel completely. Not that it is any easier necessarily, but it's a different track altogether.
Our fire chief does that easily.
What you're looking at, what you just mentioned about if you could show the costs that have been, that's the whole trick of the cost benefit, to be able to document those costs. And that can be hard because how are they documented? Sometimes, you know, individual homeowners have damages. If they haven't made a formal claim, it's hard to know. So, that's the tricky part of coming up with the cost benefit.
Julie couldn't agree with you more, by the way.
Bob, question for you. Do you have any idea, and this probably runs at least two orders of magnitude range, but what would a typical effort to create such a grant likely be? Is it forty hours or four hundred hours?
Probably more typically forty, but it really depends on the grant. I'm more familiar with the federal grant for our CASA. That's on the bigger side. I would think forty hours on a grant is a big grant, is a big-
It's a decent amount of time.
Yeah.
The ones I was like, since I've been here, they're not FEMA grants, but to the lawless kind of that. But maybe Martin has an idea?
We haven't worked with towns on the individual grants, so I really couldn't give you a number on that. But it really comes back to that cost-benefit analysis and how long it takes you to pull together the information.
Do they look kindly on mathematical cost-benefit analyses such as the probability of an incident, the magnitude of the consequence?
They actually have a form, not a formula, but a process that you have to use. You have to use their, and they'll lead you through it. They even occasionally offer trainings in how to do their cost-benefit process. So, yeah, you can't get too creative with your own methodology.
Yeah, they're very formulaic on snow and ice.
It's pretty nice, they lead you, it's all online, you just go step by step.
Send us the money, it's much easier.
Trust us.
All right, any other questions from the board? If not, we're looking for a vote tonight to accept.
The actual language should be to adopt, that's the term that we use, to adopt the plan.
I think it's another, the second, keep going.
Can we get that done, given that there's some amendments that he's working on? Just asking. I mean, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
I mean, I know what they are.
Yeah, I'm fine with them as well.
This is just a signature. This is not a, is this a motion?
No.
Is this what we're reading?
Just adopt hazard mitigation percentage.
Yes, that's a resolution you are adopting. It should be.
Do you want me to read the resolution?
I actually, I'll make the motion to adopt the Reading Hazard Mitigation Plan as revised this evening.
Second?
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. And you'll-
Four zero.
Four zero, excuse me, thank you. You'll have the updates, most recent ones in by end of the week?
Hopefully, yes.
Very good.
Where we can, there are a few places where we don't want to overturn FEMA's, but all of the formatting, all of the updated correct information, that sort of thing.
All right, good. Thank you very much for coming in, Julie. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Need to sign this or we'll just do this later?
Someone will have to sign that if my clerk's trying to-
I have a good version.
She's got the real version. All right, very good, thank you.
If a signature is needed or all of them?
Next, we're going to move to discussion and approval of the-
I'm guessing the chair.
fiscal eighteen Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Bob, you have a presentation?
I do. Well, not really a presentation. You got, you guys met with FinCom last week, so you're, you know, half of a leg up on me. The discussion that we had with FinCom, we've had privately, previously, John has had with the school committee, was basically to move the budget process up faster. So, let me just find.
Is that thing in our, is it in our packet?
It looks like this, the thing behind me, there's five pages.
I say, I don't remember in your packet where it was.
I think it's, yeah.
You can follow the line behind this.
Yeah, it's not in order.
I remember seeing that in the packet, but it doesn't get what it is.
It's hidden in there somewhere.
I think it's out of order, but it's there.
Okay. As far as I understand it now, John, Doherty and I had breakfast, so there's a slight change to this, but this is a generally accepted schedule for the budget process by the FinCom and the school committee. And I'll pass it by you formally. It begins in September with a financial forum and concludes, if you will, for a financial forum in October. Those are more typically October, November, so those are each advanced by a month. There's only so much that can happen at a September financial forum because it's very likely that the town accountant has not closed the year yet. She's still, or if she has, that the DOR has not signed off on the closed year. So, we will only have a rough idea of free cash. We'll have her estimate if she's willing to say. You know, you recall from last year that we used over two million dollars in free cash for the high school litigation, so it's unlikely that free cash goes up this year. On the October financial forum, we will have free cash, but I think the default assumption for all of us is use a million dollars annually to balance budgets. That's something we've more or less come to agree that it's regenerated. So, it doesn't matter what free cash is in that scenario. I don't think there's any significant financial articles on the warrant for November. I am aware of some positive developments internal to the capital budget. The fire chief has applied for and received a pretty significant FEMA grant for equipment. Details are still to be worked out, but that's going to save over a hundred thousand dollars in the capital plan. So, there'll be a couple of good amendments.
She's at the point, Greg, to do all FEMA stuff.
Well-
Because he wins all the time.
He does, he's very persistent. In October and November, then town and school staffs will then be devising a balanced budget. In December, the selectmen will begin and conclude their public budget process that normally takes the month of January. The schools will begin in December, but not conclude until the middle of January. They're normally going right up to February first. What John said to me today is he may add one more meeting within this timeframe, and the eighteenth would still be the last one if he doesn't have enough time. One of the things I'm going to discuss Thursday with the department heads and with John Doherty is we've set you up for four budget meetings. Typically, that's more than you usually get. From what my understanding of what FinCom told you last week was they plan to attend as a board to your meetings and the schools as much as possible, not just liaisons, but full attendance if possible.
So, we'll need a different site.
What's that?
Need a different site, probably.
Yes, I think so, probably a library or some larger venue. That being the case, I like the four meetings because they're going to, you're going to want to have more detail out of department heads. It's so much more valuable to have a department head talk than me. I mean, there's just no getting around that. And if everyone hears it once, then the department doesn't have to repeat it for the FinCom.
Yeah, that's the only one happens, they'll come in here and then in March they're doing it again. It's just, I mean, it's great because-
And John has the same issue where he, you know, he spends an hour, his first hour with FinCom is making a presentation that he's already made.
Well, we had three last year and they were really productive, and I think having everybody in the room is just better because you hear it, instead of, you know, something always seems to get lost when you do it again and again, you know.
And I know-
It just makes the central meetings more productive because you don't have to repeat all the presentations.
What's valued to me, and I don't know what's valued to you, is when someone like Jane Burns comes in and tells a story, that's the value that I see.
Absolutely.
You don't see that in a budget book. She's telling, you're talking about people, about how the real impact of the staff works.
How the program's impacted.
Well, the right questions get asked too. And, you know, everybody in the room, we get the benefit of that discussion rather than just the book.
And to that point, to the degree, I assume all that's all televised on RCTV.
Yes.
That gets played to the voter public. That's going to, I think, also pay dividends in terms of comprehension and intimacy with the data and the process. So, I think that's great that everyone's willing to sign up for these joint sessions.
Yeah, and the school department, I can't speak for the school committee yet, but the school department and the towns fully understand, you know, we need to create and produce a balanced budget to the million dollars of free cash and whatever revenues available. So, that's what the superintendent's budget will be, that's what the town manager's budget will be. We hope that that's what the school committee's budget will be, but again, they can, they have to do it themselves.
Well, this is the, I mean, the process as we laid it out is to produce a balanced budget and then add in A, or if the community grants us more revenue, we will add the following line items back into the budget. So, I would presume the school committee, it's just one budget that comes out of there and then all the, all the sort of other things become part of the addendum, and that's what we've been up to.
Yeah, but I will say, and it's not a criticism, it's just the fact that more often than not, the school committee's budget is not balanced in most recent years. And that going back ten years, I'd say seven out of ten years, it's not balanced. And that's because they believe they have a moral obligation to let everyone know what it really costs to run the school department at the minimal level that they're willing to accept, which is more than what the funding is. They're going to still have the same issue this year, guaranteed. The question is, you know, and hopefully you're right, because there's a clear understanding, and they were at your meeting with FinCom as well, they understand that the outlet for that, if you will, is a list and serves as a baseline for an override. So, but it's still worth saying all these things out loud just to make sure we've all said it.
There's still only six months to forget it, right?
Exactly. The schools will then have more budget meetings than normal, and they'll also, they're going to rearrange the order they typically do it in. And again, expect to have more participation from FinCom as a group, and certainly the selectmen are welcome.
We talked about attending, right Barry? We talked about attending those meetings.
So, yeah, we may post the board, the school committee may be posting viewers, the more the merrier. And I agree, a good, a bigger venue is very important.
Well, before you shoot off of January, what we had discussed at the FinCom meeting last week was that with the Munis budget in place, followed by the school budget voted on on the eighteenth, and then a financial forum on the twenty-fourth, that all the, as much specificity as we could get for an override number would be in place. And we had banded about the idea of voting a override number on the thirtieth, although it was, there was some confusion whether it was the thirtieth or the thirty-first, whether it was the Tuesday. But I think it came out as a Tuesday, and the idea was that it would allow us more time to inform the community about what the override would be spent on.
Yeah, the one part of the discussion, and I've talked to Barry a little bit since and John a little bit since, that I was not clear on is what is the purpose of January twenty-fourth? But as I understand it, that financial forum, you know, sometimes it's listed and optional, and sometimes we don't bother. I think what it can do this year is you've got all the balanced budgets, you've got all the ad lists, and you can call for an override that night. I don't see why you wouldn't. That's what you want to do. You've got all the information.
So, when you say call for the override, does it mean that, okay, folks, on April third, we will have an override vote on the ballot amount TBD?
No, I specified the number. Yeah. So, that means there has to be, you know, chair, vice chair discussions or whatever is necessary for the schools to, you know, assuming they prioritize the list, it's up to you, if you will, where to draw the line for both sides. That's your job, but obviously it can be a mutual discussion. And it can be a discussion on the night of the twenty-fourth.
And maybe a discussion on the twenty-fourth and, you know, to be continued, you know.
And at the end of the night, you know, if you feel comfortable that you've solved the problem and there's agreement or whatever, you guys, you five are comfortable, you do it right then.
My recollection was that the twenty-fourth, we would have public input and allow for a lot of public input, and then at the following Tuesday, meet and deliberate amongst ourselves and vote. But I don't, you know, I guess it could work either way.
Last year when we did this, you might remember, maybe not you, Andrew, but we went through the town's prioritized list and the school's prioritized list, and we did have to draw a line.
Yes.
And it was somewhat lower than both groups wanted. This year, that effort's going to be even more challenging, one. We know what the voter's view was last year, two, we're-
Another year behind.
Another year behind, so the hole's gotten deeper.
Yeah.
So, I think the hand wringing is even going to be greater this year. So, doing that on the twenty-fourth probably will, in my mind, benefit from a night's sleep and another meeting before we take it up.
Yeah.
I don't think you lose any immediacy with the public. I think all the facts are on the table, the pros and cons are all going to be evident.
Right.
RCTV will be there.
Yep.
There was a fifty percent reduction last year-
Yeah.
-in the number that was suggested to us, if you'll remember.
I mean, I think that's why we sort of talked about, I think I might have said, well, why can't we do it on the twenty-fourth? And you and Barry might have said, well, maybe that, let's look for the next week so we can have, maybe not time to sleep on it, but a little time to deliberate.
That would still give us ample time to generate the rationale for this, more so than what we had in October.
Yeah, folks have been watching and I assume they will, they don't have all of the December and January meetings. A lot of comprehension should be distributed at that point. There is, shouldn't be any surprises that come out of a discussion that happens in February, the first Tuesday in February. I think all, all the ingredients that go into the decision-making and all the baseline budgets and all of the expected punch list and party's list will all be evident to folks. So the only thing different, the only thing left is, would you snap the line? And that can be the discussion on the first meeting in February.
Or, or on the thirtieth.
Or at the thirtieth.
Is that the date? Currently, we don't have a meeting scheduled for the thirtieth, which is why I brought it up. At least not on, not that I could see. We have a...
January twenty-third.
It's January, a meeting...
February thirteenth.
Right. So we had talked about at the FinCom meeting, having a meeting on the thirtieth, almost a week after the financial forum, but then vote in override number.
Yeah, none of those meeting dates are set in stone. The only thing to be careful of is this one here. February twenty-seventh is your deadline and I would really wish you would do it sooner so we had a snow, you know.
But if we take the vote earlier on on that, then we can close the warrant on other things.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, Bob, have you had any talks, talk with the chairman of the FinCom?
I have not talked to FinCom since that...
Because on, on the, on the schedule, you know, what it does is that potentially we are, we're going out and saying, you know, we're gonna be asking for an override of X amount of dollars. We're gonna do that on the twenty-fourth and the thirtieth or February one. And that's before FinCom does its meeting. So, you know, does that kind of make FinCom's meetings a little more, you know, kind of rope? And they're sort of more...
Yeah, without being disrespectful, I'd say yes, because they've already participated much more in the process. But they feel that they now have to have some kind of budget process in February. This is what I outlined to them, whatever they want to do is fine, but they do need to vote budgets somehow.
But the budgets that are gonna be voted...
The baseline budget.
Yes. They're not gonna be really tied to any override.
Well...
Because that's unpredictable.
Sharon and Gail Dowden, I talked about that a little today. Would probably be a good idea to, for FinCom to have voted, if you will, two budgets. Because if an override is brought in the first week of April and passes, then town meeting will be asked to vote a different budget than they're gonna be looking at. They're gonna see a budget and then they're gonna have information that's the prioritized list, which can guide them through. Instead of line M1 now being a million, it's a million one. So, you know, FinCom's gonna have to vote and approve that budget before town meeting does anyways.
The amended budget or...
Yes.
Why, why would FinCom...
They have to approve a budget that they have to recommend.
Can't go to the front of the town.
Meeting a budget. They don't technically have to according to the charter, but it's certainly good practice for them to have agreed to a new budget. The town meeting is then being shown.
So then that, so then those meetings are fruitful and productive?
So, yeah, they are. And the question is whether you have FinCom vote at the end of these meetings, both budgets, if you will, or whether you wait until after an override, because again, they have to meet and they have to vote.
So between the time the override vote happens and the first town meeting happens?
Yes.
But we can't direct, I mean, we're not in the position to direct anybody to do anything outside of our purview.
Right.
But they're, you know, what was clear from, from when we all met last time was that, you know, everybody realizes that this is a different year, a different process, and I don't think anybody's being, you know, saying, well, this is the way we do it. I think, I think we're all trying to work toward a schedule that gets us to, you know, where we need to be, so.
I guess one of the questions to have, if you think about sort of who has what authority in the process. FinCom has bottom line authority in the schools, but they have more authority on town. What if John and I each present a list of prioritized, you cut, you draw the line and you agree with it, but then FinCom doesn't agree with the town's specific details? You say, instead of that, we want that. They need to have an opportunity to have that discussion in public and then vote it that way. That's all I'm saying.
But that could happen after the override passes.
Well, it should happen, the discussion should happen in February, but absolutely, the actual final decision could wait.
So you should slot another FinCom meeting somewhere in April?
They need one in March to vote warrant articles, any event, because there's no way warrant article's gonna be ready before you close the warrant. There won't be enough detail. So it's quite possible FinCom may have to meet in April, after a vote and before town meeting. It's just no big deal.
So that would say that they would, their principal vote in February would be on the base budget.
Correct.
They would have seen the prioritized list and where the line got snapped. They would know what the board of selectmen called for in terms of an override dollar amount, but their, their horizon and focus is just on the baseline until after the third of April, whereupon they talk about the incremental pieces. That actually simplifies it for them because all they're worried about is the baseline budget, which is not in debate. Both schools and town in theory are equally uncomfortable with what's in the baseline budget.
Really, the, what makes the budget palpable is, is, are the addendums that the voters may or may not agree with, so.
Yeah, that's unusual, Bob. We don't do this often, we don't do this discussion often. Does that, got any pitfalls you see with breaking it up that way?
I'm sure there will be, but I haven't thought of them yet. You know, I haven't had a conversation with FinCom, so it's really hard to know what their appetite, I just watched.
Be interested in their view on this, because I wouldn't want to do something that's, one, that we haven't thought through and two, that they have an objection to.
As I was concerned, when I first sort of saw something like this, that, you know, and Barry's comments were, well, the selectmen really need to call for an override sooner than the end of February. It's like, okay, well, you don't want to render FinCom's discussions in February as moot. But you can't move them up into January because the schools can't hit that deadline. So, you know, that was kind of the thought process and the discussion. I think this is okay, but there is a little bit of friction there.
Any discussions, Andrew?
From, from the feedback that I got, and we have FinCom's liaison here, from the feedback that, that at least what I heard from the FinCom folks was that this process was okay. Did you guys get a different feel for that?
No, but I think they wanted to sleep on it. You know, maybe they feel differently today. Vanessa?
Vanessa Alvarado, Brad Street, Finance Committee member. So at the discussion that we had on June twenty-ninth regarding this meeting, there was going to be two purposes for the meetings in February. One was to open up the discussion to allow for additional financial forums to answer any questions town residents may have to help inform on what the override would be used for. My concern is that January thirtieth date, because FinCom is in a situation where we can vote on that bottom line number, but we can't address anything that will be restored if we don't have that number. So the, the, for a selectman portion can happen for the January thirtieth and then FinCom continues on February with the vote. And there was no issue raised here at the Finance Committee meeting. So this, the January thirtieth date, I think, is the important one to ask the calendar, but February is fine as it stands now.
And, and normally too, you know, just from my years on FinCom, the FinCom budget meetings were essentially bringing in the department heads and the schools.
Which is already done.
Which, which FinCom will have been participating in the early parts of the meeting. And they were, obviously, there were, there's different questions and different takes and different angles of looking at things. But, but by and large, it was similar presentations to what had happened at the selectmen and the school committee, so.
Also bear in mind, and this has evolved a little over time, but when the budgets are shown to the selectmen, if you will, it's a draft budget. Looking for some advice in certain areas. We can discuss that again as to how much draft you want, as opposed to something a little more, maybe we can have the draft discussion before December. But that's, you know, the January budget meetings you had were genuinely looking for your input on some things before a budget was stamped as, okay, this is the town manager's budget.
My understanding also, so last year, FinCom attended many meetings throughout December, January, February, both the town and the school set. So by the time we reached those February, or, or to meetings as it were, we were already quite well versed in what was happening, the specifics of the budget. From the meeting that we all had, the, the tribe group meeting at the end of June, my understanding also was that for our selectmen would also post and attend the majority as a forum for the school committee budget so that the same process would unfold. So that when the override discussion happens, we, you already have those numbers. Is that correct, Sessie?
It is.
So we'll be attending the school committee meetings as well?
Well, they will be posted.
You know, obviously, we got our own private schedules, but my intention is to make as many of these as I can.
Okay. I mean, because it's just good to know if we, if, if these are, you know, not in concrete, but a plan, that's, you know, it's good to have that kind of advance notice.
And I consider them in concrete. You know, we may think of a pitfall and I'll let you know, but...
Well, you have to have some flexibility, of course, but, you know.
Any other comments, questions from the board?
Part of clarification. So are the, the schedule as it stands now on the school committee budget meeting, is the schedule going to be edited so that the FinCom and our selectmen are put simultaneously with this? So that, so that residents, when they look at the schedule, understand that all three or ECCs will be in attendance?
We could put a column.
Because they might be wondering, one of the questions that came up last year was, we are voting awfully quickly on this, how we haven't seen any discussion. And so if we post demonstrating that we're all in attendance, it might make it more visible.
That's a good point.
So, so in addition to FinCom then, in December, will we be expecting and inviting the school committee to join us in quorum or be posted at least?
Yeah. I think the best way to address Vanessa's point, which is an interesting one, is to sort of rename these as...
They're almost like mini financial forums, but we don't want to follow...
Financial budget meeting dash schools or dash town.
Depending on who's driving that meeting.
Right.
So in December, we're gonna be...
We're in a way game.
And I don't, we have not discussed, John and I have not discussed locations yet, but it'd be awfully nice if we always had all the meetings in one place. So everyone would know.
I can see that being confusing.
What do you mean you moved?
Thank you, Vanessa. It's all good inputs.
Okay. So just to clarify, are we in fact adding the January thirtieth date to the calendar?
Well, that's a selectman's meeting, so I'm not sure.
It'll either be this, it'll either be that week or the week following, but it'll be...
I think we need to add it.
Oh, I believe we absolutely have to add it.
But I don't, I think that, you know, the sooner the better. I like the thirtieth personally.
Is that, is that the Tuesday?
The thirtieth is the Tuesday. I'm checking that.
Yeah.
Well, we should just add it on and, you know, some, obviously, as we go forward, we realize...
Just move your twenty-third out to the thirtieth. It's not a big deal.
Or we keep it because of the stuff, other stuff we're doing.
Another meeting, given the gravity of what's going on, is not, is not onerous and probably appropriate.
No, and given that you're going to be posted and likely available, so many meetings, you do have other business. You know, you can spend the last half hour on a different topic if you need to. Not a problem.
Might decompress the Tuesday meetings, get some work done, some other work done, I should say. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and add the thirtieth and move out the twenty-third?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, we're slightly behind schedule here. Seven forty-five is what time it's supposed to be. And, I'm sorry, we'll move on to the...
To the Reading, Wakefield.
Yeah, the sale of real estate, Reading and Wakefield. This is an interesting one.
This is an interesting one. This is an area I've driven for many years and always thought as I go down Brook Street, which is a Reading name, that Reading was on the left and Wakefield was on the right, but that's not correct. It's off the map, but Ash Street is right up here, which changes name when it goes into Wakefield. But these homes here, on the right-hand side, are actually in Wakefield. This house right here, we have, we own their front yard. This is the property in question and we own the tiniest fraction of a front yard, and I'll show you photos. So this is the parcel. Wakefield owns this back section, Reading owns this front section. And interestingly, Wakefield gives in an address that doesn't really exist because Brook Street is in Reading, so they make up a Wakefield Street as if that were what it is.
So the front door is on Brook Street?
It is.
Even though the front door is technically Wakefield.
Correct. So it's an unusual circumstance, but after talking to Steve Mayo about this, you know, for us to give him that land would be way more complicated than any other process. It would take, you know, Beacon Hill would have to adjourn and start changing boundaries and they're like, no, just don't do that. Let me just show you a couple pictures so you get a picture of what this is.
It's in our packet.
That's really all you need to see. Again, I had driven past this property for years and not realized there was something behind the trees, because it's a little setback off the road. The right-hand side here is actually the driveway and there's some pretty nice looking trees that have grown up in the driveway. So the thing I haven't added, but I know you've seen it in the memo, is both Wakefield and Reading hold this in tax title and have for, for many years. Wakefield has it assessed as certainly a higher value than Reading because there's a house on it. We have it assessed as a hundred dollars. Wakefield has offered to market the property, sell both pieces publicly through a process, and split the proceeds by square footage of the land, which is very generous of them. But then in terms of taxes, we do share the same assessor, so it was an interesting discussion we had. It's totally up to him how he assesses value. And he is unlikely to change his current methodology because the Reading parcel alone is not worth that much. So it's not gonna be thirty-five percent of the total value of the lot, even though that might be what the sale price is, just so you know. So it's, it might be a one-time fifty or a hundred grand in the sale of real estate fund and otherwise it's just putting something useful back into... And neither one of us have gotten many complaints from a butters on this property. It's not border health problem level from walking around. You don't know what it's inside. It's just uncared for and for many years.
So you're suggesting that if Wakefield goes and markets this, that our share could be a hundred thousand?
What's a lot worth? Couple hundred thousand, maybe?
It's the front yard, this one.
But I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know the square.
You know, one would think this lot is not worth that, but...
We only own like a sliver of it.
It's like a third.
But the home, I mean, it's the, it's the entirety of the property with the home on it and everything else. Someone's gonna buy that.
It's a very small parcel, although our part's small, the rest of it is, is very small as well. So you're not looking for a vote, this is just advice?
No, this is just for your information. This is a little hard to read, but I just wanted to show you that's, there's our assessed value, a hundred dollars. You know, we don't technically need your approval, but since this will be a public process with a neighbor, I thought you definitely should see it.
Okay, thank you.
Public meeting. And I know there's been someone that I think is here tonight that's expressed some interest in it, so.
Any public comment? Anyone like to speak?
I did just have one question, because I did reach out to Steve Mayo, but I am interested in it.
Could you just stand and let us know your name? There's folks watching at home, so.
Oh, jeez. So I just had a question about the tax taking process. So Wakefield said they finished the affairs and they needed Reading to finish theirs and wanted it to be put up in public.
Right.
Actually, just, just tell us who you are, your name, where you live.
Oh, I'm Karen Mead. I currently live in Reading.
Okay.
I grew up in Wakefield.
What street do you live on?
Right now, I live right on Highlands.
Thank you.
You know, after tonight, we can, then I'll sit down with Steve. I'm seeing him next week. And we'll figure out a timetable. Reading, we're, we're, we're going through a period where a changing treasurer, which is the only thing that gives me a little hesitation. Our new treasurer starts in a week and a half. So I don't want to do anything until we have a new treasurer, but after that, I'm fine with advertising the property and selling along. As far as we know, everything is fine in tax title, everything is clear. So the treasurer is the person who has the legal authority to sell it in Reading.
Oh, okay.
This was sort of a formality. In Wakefield, it's a little different. Their rules are a little bit different. He did the same thing, but it meant something slightly different in Wakefield.
Oh, okay.
So he needed more permission, if you will. Our treasurer has that permission. But again, the position's vacant for ten days, so I just wanted to wait. I would think that it's something that, you know, will go on the market, let's just say August.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Barry?
So Bob, so Wakefield is gonna take the lead and sort of doing the marketing of it.
Yeah.
Is there any public hearing process for Wakefield? If it were us, would we be required to do any kind of a public hearing?
They had their public hearing in a selectman's meeting, if you will. That, that is a requirement that they had in their charter. We don't have that, so this sort of acts as...
I guess the only thing that I would have, you know, kind of hoped to see or encouraged to see if it's still possible is that if there is any kind of public input about sort of what the, what it's used for, that even though Wakefield's, you know, sort of running that, it does have an impact on residents who are butting Reading. At least there's some kind of notification or hearing. Or do you know if in fact Reading residents were notified?
The neighborhood was definitely notified. Both towns were notified. I don't have any feedback on who attended. You know, these are all Wakefield homes down here. Wakefield, so technically, except for across the street, they're Wakefield of butters, if you will, for what that's worth. But I know both sides were.
The line going this way is not the town, is not the law?
The line going north, northeast.
This line serves, it's close to where the actual border is, right here, this one. So that's a Reading home, that's a Reading home.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I think technically, the whole home is in Wakefield, even though it looks like it cuts it off here. So close enough.
We could have a swimming pool half in Reading and half in Wakefield.
Yeah. At least, at least it's not a state border.
So this would be a bidding process to seal bids over a period?
I don't know, honestly. We haven't discussed that. Whatever Victor thinks is, is fine. I know there's a, we have to follow public procurement, disposition, same thing. This is different than anything we would do through town meeting because it's tax title and the treasurer has, if you will, town board or selectman's authority. You know, I will tell you with the new treasurer, one of the things we're gonna do is fix the tax title process a little bit and regiment it. We would take properties in tax title whenever there was time, the treasurer had time, which wouldn't always tell anyone. So you could see the condition of the property. And Wakefield felt the same way. They were embarrassed when we actually went out there one day and looked at and said,
Couldn't have been done much sooner.
It should have been done three years ago.
Any other questions, Andrew?
John, commenting, a quick question. This, this sort of bizarre setup between town boundaries happens more than you would think in New England for, I'm sure, reasons long since forgotten. Regarding the butters and what's gonna be done with the property, is it's own residential?
Yep.
So it's gonna be a residence, no matter...
And it's clearly non-conforming. It's a very small lot.
Right.
It's gonna have to be essentially what it is, and whether the house is structurally sound, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be a similarly sized house, good out of floor.
Okay.
I would say, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Any other public comment? Thank you very much for coming in. Okay, we're gonna move on now to the town manager's fiscal seventeen goals. We're on page one seventy-six in tonight's packet. Okay, we're going to move on now to the town manager's fiscal '17 goals. We're on page 176 in tonight's packet.
I'll just step you through these quickly. I think I had put this in your packet a couple weeks ago, just so you get a preview. I mean, we did pretty well on our goals this year, for what that's worth. Most of the goals, I didn't count them, but most of them were completely accomplished. Certainly, the one I call your attention to, which we've discussed before, is how do, again, how do we put our arms around board committee communication? That's with each other and with the board of selectmen. I mean, you appoint a lot of boards. We need to improve that communication process. A lot of boards work on common issues. We need to improve their communication process with each other. This is a very typical thing in this area in New England. There's a lot of boards in other communities, more of them are elected than in Redding. You know, if they will, they all have their little cone of expertise and experience, and that's fine if you don't ever want anything to change in a community. But when you start to try to have some sort of a top-down planning discussion about change, you need to have much better communication in your boards. And, you know, shame on, on us, I guess, for not having better information flow to all of our boards on things that they should be aware of.
Right.
So, zoning articles, go on a town meeting. You know, CONSCOM ought to know about them. Let them think of them what they will. They ought to know about them. I don't know if we ever formally tell them. These are some of the things we've talked about internally. It was particularly difficult until three, two, two years ago, because Jean had so much part-time help, some regional positions, where there just wasn't the capacity at the staff level to have staff meetings. It was impossible. She couldn't have staff meetings. She had one today. They're almost all full-time employees, except for Jane Burns. Now, at least the staff communication at the baseline is much better. I think that was an important first step. Now, it's up to the boards and us to help the boards communicate with each other a little bit better. And, you know, from, from Jean's experience and my experience, generally speaking, boards are very receptive to knowing more of what's going on, even if it doesn't directly affect them. But, logistically, as we've seen, you guys have had some great meetings with, like CPDC, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Logistically, it's not easy for boards to get together on nights they don't generally meet, you know.
Schedule's already there.
You know, Tuesday, we met on Wednesday. Oh, boy, what are we going to do?
And now, we're going to be, well, let's make it come.
Oh, yeah. So, it's still an open issue. You know, we'll talk about it when we get to FY18. That's the only goal I think we really didn't hit very well. John Halsey met with a couple of us for staff, and we're looking at the, some of the selectman's policies. I'll follow up with you later this week on some of those things. I think, again, everyone did a good job on the vast majority of this list. And when you remember how much time and effort went into the override starting last summer and into the fall, you know, I'm, I'm very proud that everyone did such a good job on this. And for the first time in a few years, and I know all regards saying this, we're almost fully staffed. So, that's a big help. It's hard to have one person doing two people's jobs sometimes. So, I also included a lot of detail that I really don't feel obliged to go into tonight for you to, you know, review, comment on, if you will. And this might serve you more as a basis for the town manager evaluation discussion. So, I've, I've made some comments in here, as we do just about every quarter. That's it for FY17, unless there's any outstanding questions.
Comments from the board?
I just have a comment on that, on goal number 12. First of all, I think there, you have way too many goals. And so, so I felt that, especially given our financial situation in town, that there is sort of a mechanism in place, I say this with some reluctance, because now I'm selecting and supposed to go to liaison meetings, but we do have a mechanism by which, even if we can't make the meetings, we can get an email from the chair of what are the big ticket items they're looking at. And then, we as a board during our liaison reports can just give a three-bullet report on what each board, committee, commission is doing. And then, that's a sort of a, we become the central location for information on, in effect, what's happening on all the boards, committees, and commissions. So, you hear it, we all hear it.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
So, do you think there would be value to sort of push that down the road a little? Is there value for some or all of the boards you folks appoint in almost having a written comment to you on a regular basis? Be it quarterly, might be too much twice a year. Do you find that helpful?
You know, I, I think if we just, you know, first of all, none of us can get to all of our liaison assignment meetings all the time. You know, I'm, I'm the library liaison. I've gone to one since we reorganized. More just to kind of, you know, introduce what we're doing, you know, sort of the whole process on the override, and then ask them, hey, you know, what's going on with you guys? I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, and I didn't go to the last one, so... But I get the minutes, and I get the agendas, and I do go through them, and I just sort of see what they, what they did. And sometimes, you know, they're more informative than others. But perhaps we can, although the library, we don't point so far, we can do something differently, but I don't know once we can. You know, just a review of the minutes, and, and maybe it's a conversation with the chair. Liaison on the chair, talk every quarter, what's going on. What do you, how can we help you? What do you need? This is what's going on that will impact your work over the next six months. You know, and then, you know, when needed, we report in our liaison reports. But, I mean, I do get, I mean, I get, I get stuff all the time from what I'm, what I'm a liaison to, and I go through it. I, I just don't go to one.
Well, the idea, I mean, you got to think about the fact that there are 16 nights in a month that these meetings go on. And we, on average, have six or seven appointment assignments, besides the two that we have here, which means somewhere between eight and 10 of the 16 nights that are available is where we would have to be, assuming they don't cross-ruff each other.
Right.
And there's two at the same time.
Well, sometimes they're all...
Which happens. I mean, so, you know, and I, a, a more technological approach, even if it's, that's a telephone call, is going to have to be implemented. Or, we have to operate with less committees. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's one or the other, because you really can't possibly physically, you know, make them. I mean, you can't get to all of them.
You turn it around. Don't just look at it from our perspective. From the committee's view, they've been asked to, to do something. If they don't see a regular face from us, I do think they get siloed, and they, they walk into a position of, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do, but, and, but let's focus our attentions over here. I think it, for no fault of anyone, it just lends itself to this kind of very siloed approach. And then, when something really does happen, you don't have the relationships that are...
They do, they do come in once a year, for the most part.
No, they all don't come in.
No.
It's a small subset that regularly come in.
I think it's incumbent on us to reach out and get the bullet point lists of what they're up to every month or whatever, and then speak it here, so that you know what the Climate Advisory Committee is. We all know it. The reason, I'm sensitive to this is because, I don't know how many years ago, four or five years ago, when we changed the age of to buy tobacco in Redding, the Board of Health did, and never informed the Board of Selectmen at the time, more out of ignorance than out of... And then, then you, the Board of Selectmen at the time were totally caught off-guard. And so, I think that can be avoided if we have a conversation or an email with the chair. What are your big ticket items that we need to...
There's two issues. I think you're poking at one, which is the operational part. I do think there's another second point, which is John's poking at, which is just the sheer efficiency of an organization that has 26 heads. We really need to be consciously, or at the size of government, in the sense that it has a real cost. It may not be denominated in dollars. It may be denominated in our hours, which have no cost. It may be denominated in overtime.
Well, it has no cost to the, to the municipality.
To the municipality. It's plenty of, I want my two hours back sometimes, right? Because plenty of meetings we get into, and you say, not necessarily here, but it worked. Gee, I wish I had my 15 minutes back. So, if we don't have regular meetings with these boards, we won't grasp the magnitude and size and efficiency of this organization that, we just won't have any way to endure it. And that's what's really going to inform our thinking about how we should go forward. So, I think there is value, Bob, in having folks come in front of us, even if they don't today. And maybe you prescribe it so it's a 10-minute brief, and it happens once a quarter or twice a year. If for no other reason than to force the organization to realize, my goodness, we're enormous. What do we, you know, this can't be this way, right? Or maybe it's, we should put more resources here, because it should be this way.
Well, it'll change the scope of these meetings, but it's a far more efficient way of, of getting... Because all we've talked about right now is half the issue. It's, it's bringing back here what they're, what they're working on. What about, you know, what we would like, you know, because these are committees that are advisory to us? And, you know, so, we haven't even begun to discuss that piece. I mean, I've campaigned for years around, and I don't know how often this is, but even if it's a chair, vice chair, when you have 30-plus committees, besides the elected committees, all running off in different directions and never having either a, at least, I think, at least a semi-annual gathering where one hand knows what the other one's doing. This has been, this has been a growing problem, in my opinion, especially as the budget tightens, as things become, you know, you know, more difficult and need to be managed more closely. We have not brought the chair, vice chair, under one roof, at least semi-annually, so that people on conservation and historic have a good idea what's going on from a budgetary standpoint. I mean, it's not fair to them to try to do their job without that information coming from us, in my opinion. And so, I would suggest that we call it a summit, call it whatever you want to call it. And it doesn't have to be, you know, a massive, all 35 committees, all their members show up, but a chair, vice chair.
No, I agree.
You know.
With a prescribed format.
We've talked about that.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it for four years now.
Without that, we just have no sense of the size and scope, and we're really driving somewhat rudderless in some areas.
Yeah, and one of the challenges from our side is we don't necessarily staff all these volunteer boards. Some of them, no Redding employee ever goes to a meeting.
Right.
They do their own minutes, they post their own agendas, they are completely autonomous. And that's not by our choice. We just soon help them. We just don't have people. You know, as the government has cut its budget, it has not cut its committees. And we've pushed more work, in some cases, onto the committees. And that was particularly true, again, when we cut a lot of Jean's administrators in half, or worse. And CONSCOM, as an example, got a lot more work to do themselves, and they let us know. And they had some really good points, so we were able to put a full-time person back. But nowhere along the process was a discussion, really, of, let's evaluate this as a work problem, as opposed to, let's just cut the position in half, and off we go. Some boards can't change their amount of work. I'll say loosely, the planning boards and the land use boards, they have to, you know, they're statutory, they have to do what they do.
Right.
Those, but we staff those.
Not historic, and not West Side historic, but the rest, I think so.
CPDC and ZBA, we staff.
ZBA, no, not...
Oh, we don't staff?
The building inspector used to go and then stopped.
Oh, yeah.
So, again, you know, because if I had resources at all these meetings, you guys would get a lot better flow also, because I'd give it to you. I don't have it. I can't give you something I don't have. So, this is actually kind of a big issue.
I, I think it's a...
Trying to get people on the same page.
I think it's really a big issue. Being on the same page in the environment that we're in today is really important.
Yeah.
And, and the fact that we don't have the resources to do that says we have to come up with a different methodology, in my opinion, or, you know, change the, change the scope of what we're dealing with.
Yeah, and I think the financial forums have been around for a long time, before me. They're very successful. We do a good job at finance generally. There's no surprises where one of the elected boards suddenly says, oh, my gosh, I didn't know about this. You need the same approach to other groups of boards.
Yes.
You know, land use boards is a simple thing to say, but I'm not even sure I could give you what that list should be. But you need to have some kind of forums, not for everyone, because it doesn't make sense, but for like-minded groups. And some groups will hang out there as there is no one like them.
Would it be inappropriate, you know, I mean, we reorganize, we reorganize typically following an election. So, let's say sometime in April, we're reorganized. To have at least an, do the committees do that? I don't know.
They do what they choose to do.
Correct. And so, it almost makes me think...
Yeah, the committees, though, we're appointing them generally, not just...
Well, because we're doing the June 30 thing. If you look at our policy, if you look at the selectman's policy that currently exists at the moment, we're not supposed to reorganize till June.
That's not exactly true. We can organize whenever we want.
That is correct, but it's the suggestion was that you would do this in June. That's the suggestion of the policy. And of course, you can do what you need to do. It's our policy, so if we need to adjust, we're going to do it. All I'm suggesting is that we start to line these things up in a way that they get to be, you know, more manageable. And if you did an annual summit, I mean, look, when you, when you become a selectman, there's, there's a state organization that offers you a training program if you want to go to it. You go or you don't go. But here we are. We have people that join our committees. We reappoint them, we recruit them. And frankly, we don't give them at least an annual opportunity to all come together in one place so that everybody can kind of get on the same page with us and understand what the plan is. And, you know, more often than that may be onerous, but I don't think it's too much to ask to think about, if you, if you get something like that done, pick the time. It can be September, it can be May. It's, it probably shouldn't be from between the time schools out and the time school reconvenes, because, you know, people disappear, you know, rightfully. But, you know, I do think that on the shoulders of that summer getaway, we should be doing some kind of an annual summit of chairs and vice chairs to get everybody on the same page.
Well, let's at least try. We won't know till you try. The other thought that that triggers in my mind is with such new, such a volume of new people coming onto committees, it'd be helpful to have normalized, open meeting training for folks to kind of get uptake. You've talked about that before. Any progress on that, Bob? I know you've flagged out.
Yeah, there's, there's two parts of it. One of it is, if you will, state-driven, and the state will come out, the AG's office will send someone. Martha Copley came out years ago. And then, the rest is what the selectmen want to accomplish in that meeting, once they're there. So, there's, there's open meeting law and ethics, but you have an opportunity to do more, because open meeting law and ethics is not a long topic, actually.
How long would you think it would be?
An hour. So, you've got everyone in the room, and in the past, we've done a part two, which was, you know, the Board of Selectmen would make some comments, whatever they were. I don't even remember, honestly, what they were.
You could get something done very efficiently, and it could be highly productive in two hours, I think.
I would think 90 minutes. We don't need to belabor the point. If you did training, questions, and, you know, 90 minutes or thereabouts would be done before nine o'clock.
What I had suggested to you at some point, I think it was February, March, I started to talk about it, was it's, it's a really good idea to get groups of people together. There's no question about that. But to get them together for an open meeting law might be a little bit dry, or for anything else. That's why I suggested some projects where common boards had to come together and solve a problem. And there's at least one or two of those in the FY18 goals. That's another way to approach it, is throw an issue out there, whatever it is. Say, all right, you know, this hits your four boards in one way or the other. You guys go figure it out. Come to the board with a suggested solution to the problem we've given. I think working on an exercise would be much more valuable, honestly, if we can come up with valuable exercises.
Well, one's compliance, one's more operational. How do you hit the compliance and the operation?
Well, you got to hit the compliance either at the same time or separately, but that's...
I see.
We need to do a much better job, I'll say, onboarding volunteers, like we do employees. We don't do a perfect job of employees either, but we can do a lot better than volunteers.
I talked to Alan, and...
Yeah.
We don't do a great job of onboarding town meeting.
Right.
You know, these are the folks that ostensibly voted on the policy. You have a third, third of town meeting members were brand-new, and they, their first introduction was the meeting that they went to.
Yeah, and we discussed that in the Charter Committee. I, I still happen to think it's terribly wrong to have an election and then a town meeting. I think the last thing you do is your town meeting, and then you have an election. So, people have a whole cycle to catch up. But you're asking potentially one-third of town meeting, if there was a full slate, to decide on things they're walking into two weeks before. But that's, that was tradition, and that wasn't going to change. And that's not, that's common. There, both ways are done in this area, but ours way is more common. Both ways are done in this area, but ours way is more common. I don't think it's very efficient. But if the town meeting never turns over, it's fine, what's the difference?
All you had to do was look at the last town meeting, and to understand that there were many new members, which is great. And they were apologizing for not understanding, and I, and, you know-
Those are the ones who actually spoke?
Yeah, and then, yes, you're right, because there are many that are just going, whoa, I'm not getting in the middle of this till I figure out what's going on. And it may be a year before they feel comfortable, because they've been, you know, thrown into the fire, kind of literally, within a matter of a couple of weeks. I mean, I think that that's something we really should bring up as a topic with town meeting, because it's a charter issue. And I think it should be open to discussion, that we might want to rethink, I mean, and you've got to do this on a runway. I mean, you can't just do that, to rethink some of that timing. Because, Bob, I think you're really right about the juxtaposition of our elections in Reading and what we're asking newly-elected people to do.
And your situation's perfect, the board reorganizes, and then the new chair has to give a state of the town address two weeks later.
Yeah.
Welcome to the select-
And, you know-
At least that, at least the new chair was on the board generally.
Typically, yeah. So it's not, like, completely blindsided, but still, I just, I do think that there's an inverse order to the way that that is being done in Reading at the moment.
There's a community that Ray mentioned, I don't remember who they are, that they have their annual town meeting, and the last item of business is the local election. So think about that. Do it on a Saturday, somewhere around two o'clock.
And then they have their election?
Then they announce, the election's already happened during the day, then they announce the results as the last business of town meeting. The new board of selectmen will be, you know, whatever, town meeting members will be. I thought that was pretty interesting.
That is-
So they have the election on a Saturday?
Yes.
That is, there's, there are a number of communities that do that.
That means during a meeting of the board of selectmen, you're sitting there, and it's the last article of the evening, you're fired.
Exactly, that's, that's exactly what happens.
Thank you very much.
Well, it saves the sign-holding on election day.
Well, Bob, which, I know, I should know this, but our agendas are often filled with boards coming to talk to us. Which are the ones that don't?
I'd have to really look at a list.
Over half of them.
Actually, that's a good point, Barry, could we get a listing of those that don't? Who are the, those that don't come frequently, who don't get a lot of stuff?
Because you see more than boards, you see, like, the MAPC rep, that's a board, the ice arena.
I think over half of the boards that are advisory to us never come in here on a regular basis.
Is it because we don't invite them, or do we invite them and they say, yeah?
No, it's because we don't invite them.
Well, maybe we should look at that.
Well, you have to, if it's going to serve a capacity, it's got to work, and that's the thing that's missing. The reason they're there is to do useful work, and we're not getting the work done. That's the irony here.
Makes our meetings a little longer.
You can't just say, come and give us an update, that's not enough.
No.
You've got to give them more.
Right, but it's like, okay, you know, but prior to their coming in, you know, they do a two-page report. This is what we've been working on, this is what, you know, these are our accomplishments. It gets into our packets, we have time to read it. These are the things that we really would like to do going forward. And then that becomes a discussion, it's like, well, wait a minute, why don't they put doing this instead? And then there's their agenda for the following year.
Yeah, I'll give you an example, it's just a recent one. My memory of the climate committee, through different chairs, has always done a really good job of reaching out to me, it seems, and saying, you know, what are the issues the selectmen are interested in? Here's what we're doing, and preparing for your meeting, very much so. And when they come in and have a presentation, that's just not off the cuff, that's been discussed for a couple of months.
They're generally prepared, yeah.
But that's how they are, and they are very respectful of the fact you appoint them, and they want to use your time well. That's not a bad model, but they ask to do it, other boards don't, and I'm not saying they should.
Well, maybe that's part of the, part of the jobs, the chair. Maybe it's the session of the chairs or co-chairs, so that everybody understands kind of what they're, you know, it's not only just doing what your subject matter is, it's reporting back to the board and communicating with your liaison.
Any other comments on the fiscal seventeen before we move on? Okay, why don't we move to eighteen?
Here's eighteen behind me, this is obviously not going to be solved tonight, I just wanted to give a start. I have the same, well, similar groups, not exactly the same. We have the senior tax relief going into place this year. You will have tax classification, that's a big topic this year. Victor and I each have our thoughts kind of on how to approach it, we'll try to agree at some point.
Applications to do with a couple of others, they can be-
The form is not yet gone through town council, it will be in the next week or so. So August first is when the applications will be first allowed.
Are we doing something to communicate that?
Yeah, we've had, he's already had a couple of meetings.
The tax bill, it was in the water bill.
I never see those, my wife doesn't allow me.
Yeah, the application should be out there probably in the next ten days. We didn't want it to go out in June, we'll forget about it, although now it's getting a little late. It seems like there's three parts to the override, there's the financial overview that we've already pretty much cut down. There's a department head need to sit down and talk about town priorities, so that when we present you with the list, we've all had that discussion, and that's not going to happen overnight, we'll work on that. Then there's the general, I especially want your feedback on communication. That's Jane Miller's thing, Jane and Matt, we'll work on that. We had an economic development meeting today that Jane was part of, she's really good at knowing how people communicate. You know, that used to be her business. Here's one of these community projects, if you will, that can bring a couple of boards together. You'll see a staff lead, a name you don't recognize, that's our new treasurer. His name is, I hope he doesn't change his mind, Andre Kumey. He most recently comes to us from Babson College. He's a really, really talented, very interesting guy, and a Reading resident.
What did you do at Babson?
Some of it was charitable giving. He doesn't know about this yet. You know, he's a financially curious guy, and that's what we, someone who's really, he doesn't, he doesn't ever bring you a problem, he just brings you three solutions to a problem you didn't know. So this would involve, again, two or three of the groups, such as the commissioners of trust funds. And I'm going on, that's the assistant library director now, Waring. Nelson Burbank said to me many, many times, you know, more than ten. If this town would organize charitable giving, you'd get a lot more charity. I don't know if that's the business of municipal government or not, as opposed to, you know, a charitable foundation, but let's at least find out all the things that go on in Reading, a lot of it's athletics, but it's not all athletics. And let's put together a list, and let's find out what's going on, and see if the town should or shouldn't participate in some formal way, I don't know. But no one's ever sat down to truly try to figure out.
Are you talking about on the fundraising side, or the giving side?
I don't know, honestly, John.
Because that's a really important distinction, when you think about that as a general subject matter.
I had a first thought giving, but as I thought about it more, I didn't know if I wanted to draw the line there. So I don't know.
Well, you know, there have been many organizations in this town that are nonprofit themselves in general, or groups of citizens who have shown great interest in doing things with and for the town, partnering. And I think that fits under this umbrella, I mean-
Well, the fact that, for instance, Babe Ruth takes care of fields, it might not be giving in the traditional sense, but it's important to know about that.
Well, I will tell you that, so for, that as an example. If you look at neighboring towns, that has an economic value to this town of over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Good example.
Because the neighboring towns all have a person that does that. And, you know, they're all in cost, you know, and I'm not talking about somebody who's highly compensated, I'm talking, by the time you get a competitive wage and a benefit package all tied together, that's a hundred thousand dollar cost. And that partnership, for example, is probably saving the town the greatest majority of that cost. Or it would be not serviced, which is-
Not take care of your assets.
Exactly, and your assets, those assets diminish in a blink. I mean, there's another example of that that just recently happened, as you know, Bob. You know, we've got Sturgis Park, there's a softball field and Little League field that has been used for, you know, eons. It's never had any water down there, and a new-
That's very kind.
Well, correct, it's never a controlled source of keeping the field, you know, serviced properly from a water standpoint. New, you know, the Reading Little League softball comes into creation over the last year, and one of the first things they do at the end of their first year is they make a five thousand dollar contribution to make that happen, you know, at no cost to the town. So we need to be able to explore those philanthropic partnerships, and I think that's, that may be where this fits.
I can think as well, Bob, you know, this probably aligns mostly to athletics, as you said, but I can tell as a parent on the other side of that twenty years ago, we were very confused about how, we have plenty of labor, we have plenty of can-do attitudes, we had a bunch of ideas, we had no idea how the proceeds should best be fit back into the organization. We're not a, we're not a nonprofit, we don't want to be a nonprofit, we just want to raise money for the kids, we're parents. I imagine there's a lot of that at the town level that would happen, but it's a chicken and an egg problem, so this is a, this is a great idea. And then you get to the giving part, and you think about whether it's in-kind contributions. We'll need to have quite a bit of policy in that area to figure all that out.
Yeah.
And it's not really just exclusively athletics either. You know, the first time, not the first time, but recently, you know, a young man came to me, he had an interest in, guess what, the band stand at Memorial.
Yeah, that's right.
He plays there, you know, he plays, you know, he performs there. And, you know, in his role as an aspiring Eagle Scout, he wanted to replace it. And we actually assembled some people, and, you know, it just, the scope of the project was way beyond, you know, what somebody, you know, in his position trying to raise resources was going to be able to do. But the sense of it is there, and it's not just athletics, it's a lot of other, it's a lot of other things, and that needs to be explored and developed.
I mean, but there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going on in town already that people are doing either on their own or through different organizations. I was on the board of the Reading Scholarship Foundation. They give every year north of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to kids graduating high school in Reading to go on to college. You know, the, all the schools, you know, from the PTOs, the Reading Educational Fund, you know, raising not small amounts of money. Young Women's League, which, you know, people here are on, significant amounts of money. So I would want to make sure that whatever we do doesn't sort of overstep on the wonderful things that are already happening here. And I don't, I kind of, I guess I'm not sort of seeing, I mean, obviously there are holes, things that aren't getting done, but I want to just make sure that, you know, that, because it's the same, it's the same people that would be giving, but they're already maybe giving to some other things, whether it be a softball thing, or the Young Women's League, or the Educational, the Scholarship Foundation, you know, we don't want to necessarily poach the good things that are happening now.
That's why I said, I don't really know what the role of town government really should be.
It's less about poaching and more about organizing.
Yeah, exactly.
If there's kind of an organizational move, so that it comes back to this one hand knowing what the other one's doing. I mean, there are, you're absolutely right, there are a load of organizations in this town. You've mentioned several of them. You know, the Reading Rotary Club probably, you know, spends over a hundred thousand dollars a year in, you know, back into this town. What's missing, in my opinion, is a central way to have it, if it's coordinated, I'm not saying take it over, and I'm not saying put a damper on any of it, or control it. I'm suggesting, you know, some organizational backup that might help. I think you've tried this with the cultural group.
Yes, I was thinking of them, and I was also, and the image of herding cats came into mind, but- Part of this is just marketing, making John twenty years ago more aware of what his options were as a parent. That's not the role of government to tell you what to do, or you know, help. It's just, much like we're working informally, again, with just a, you know, an ad hoc group of cultural folks that organize themselves, helping them think through as a group, how they can do things as a group more effectively than individually. Though they still want us to buy them a community center.
So that's number five.
Finance department policies with some new staff is a very important thing for Sharon to do. You've got a preview of public works policies, you'll see another one fall on that. HR and Matt and Jean will work on the topic of employee retention, some of that's financial, a lot of that is not financial. That's something that the three of them actually came to me about, and they're just going to work on, so I can only guess at what it is. But obviously, turnover is one of the most expensive things an organization can go through. And I'll tell you, when I first became town manager, I didn't take it personally, but we had a lot of turnover, we had a lot of retirements, forty-five-year veterans at DPW going around the same time. It had been known, it had been planned, but for an organization of our size to replace twenty-five percent of the workforce over eighteen months is not easy, and especially to keep doing work in the meanwhile. So retention's important, and obviously, as, you know, the younger generation comes into our workforce, it becomes a much more important topic. We'll see where that goes. We've not had much of a public discussion on purpose on the fact that town meeting did fund a building security study. I do have a final version, a final draft version. I will be putting together a meeting of chairs and vice chairs of the three elected boards, I think. We're going to talk about it Thursday at the staff level with Amy, John Doherty, and myself. And then we'll get a sense of what the chairs, vice chairs would like to do, but it seems almost for sure that you're going to need an executive session with the three elected boards to discuss, you know, there's a price tag on some security improvements suggested, as to how does this fit into the financial picture of the town. So we'll give you more on that. It's, they did an excellent job, I'll say it's very thorough. I've asked both chiefs to, this summer, do a staffing study of our twenty-five or so peer communities formally. Not just how many cops, what do they do, how many police, you know, how many patrol, how many sergeants, lieutenants, SROs, school resource officers. They've already begun that.
Does this get at the point where, what's ample staffing vis a vis overtime and things?
Yeah, we're going to have to, I saw that discussion then.
At FinCom, I've heard a little bit.
Yeah, I've actually had a little chat with the union president yesterday. I said, it's in all our best interest to all understand the generators of overtime. What we choose to do to fix it, you might not agree with me, and that's okay, but we all need to understand what's going on here. You know, and we all have a rough idea of how many more firefighters would cause the overtime problem to be better behaved, but, you know, I will give you a preview, that some of the reasons for those transfers were uncertainty and safety at the end of a fiscal year. Public safety is going to turn back well more than the twenty-five thousand extra that they got, that was a just-in-case number. And that's a philosophical question, I heard someone on FinCom bring up snow and ice, which, you know, had a certain amount of merit to compare, and not entirely. For public safety overtime, you want to over-budget, because you can't afford not to have the money if you need it, and you want to turn it back. That's a hard thing to do, and we're having a tight financial time. Snow and ice is really the opposite, you want to under-budget, because you don't want to tie up those resources if it doesn't snow.
And the state doesn't help you if you do.
So, you know, we could have a philosophical discussion about, well, let's not budget an extra fifty grand in public safety overtime anymore. And when I say budget, I also mean ask for money at FinCom, town meeting, whatever. Let's wait until now, this time in July, and then have an emergency meeting of FinCom and the selectmen, when we know what the facts are. We could do that legally, that's possible.
But now you've depleted your FinCom reserve budget in July.
Well, that's the problem. Technically, it's okay for FinCom for a certain period of time to vote a prior year as FinCom reserve. We thought it was bad practice. We did it once in an emergency, but technically, it's not good. So I think public safety staffing will be a big topic.
That's going to be a big piece, that's going to really inform a lot of the budget discussions in terms of what we decide. You know, what does adequately staff mean? How many sworn officers do you need to be adequate? I mean, the chiefs will tell you they'll do the greatest job they can, whatever you give them. But that's not the, that's not the answer, that's not the question. The question is, what do we really need, and what's the, financially, you know, if we're going to run it really thin and then wind up giving it back plus more and over- You know, if, if we're going to, if we're going to run it really thin and then wind up giving it back plus more in overtime, what do we gain?
Yeah, and I don't think we do give it back in overtime, just for my editorial comment, but they need to present facts to all of us.
That's, that would be helpful going into the budget discussion.
Yeah, and I, I want them to have that available for the September financial forum. Good. There's still some work. Matt is doing it with Town Council and the Bylaw Committee. They're bringing some, I haven't seen them, some set of general bylaws to November Town Meeting. You've got a preview of personnel policies. Those will be back in front of you after we close the year again. I talked to our former HR director, actually, some, some degree today, and she's going to work with Labor Council now that we've, careful what I say. We have one-year agreements with all of our unions, so we need to re-engage in the bargaining cycle. So we want to have a legal review in preparation for that cycle. It's not a, not a lot of heavy lifting, but it's much like you saw in the personnel policies discussion. It's making sure that in the union contract you have modern language. So equal opportunity employer meant something a lot different 20 years ago with words than it means now. We haven't necessarily ever looked at our contracts except for things that we were arguing about. That wasn't one of them. So we really need a legal scrub of all that. Board of Selectment policies, you're pretty well familiar with. We'll knock those off as, as best we can. It's time for Reading to redo its affordable housing production plan. I was really surprised at that. I think we have to do it potentially by next January, if I'm right.
Is it going to be 10 years?
Uh, yeah. I didn't realize it was 10 years ago.
So the fact that we got the stay of execution from the state.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. You know, a topic that'll come up is the DPW yard and cemetery garage issue. You're pretty familiar with. Not sure if we need any more executive session meetings. We might need one more. That discussion's ready to go public over next winter and maybe a little sooner. You, I missed the meeting, but you had a discussion on the cell tower water storage issue. My only comment will be, the town cannot forbid carriers. That's the FCC that decides that. So just because we don't like it doesn't mean they won't be here in whatever location. The FCC says it's okay. So, but obviously, maybe it wasn't obvious. We had brought it as a beginning of a discussion. It's funny, when I watched the replay of your meeting, I asked almost all the same questions that came up that night of staff. You know, what are our alternative locations are there? And, you know, they, they knew, they're looking at it. It just didn't initially come out in the presentation that way, and that's okay. You heard from the Elder Human Services that they've really outgrown or soon will outgrow their space. So that's suddenly become a five-year from now project. I think it's now a one or two-year from now project we've got to take seriously. It's not in the capital plan. It needs to be in the capital plan. We need to have a discussion. Honestly, Oakland Road is a good location. Now, I will tell you, when I once said I had an interesting three-party solution for Oakland Road, that it was revolving around Elder Human Services. Some of that discussion is still possible. Believe it or not, our master plan is out of date. That's more than 10 years ago. We do such a good job with all the pieces that we don't sort of feel obliged to do a master plan. Some communities only do a master plan and don't have all those little pieces, but that's something that generally and traditionally the Selectmen have driven. You can do that or you can have staff do it, but it's something that we need to start talking about in the next year. I had a long meeting today, actually two of them, with Andrew and Jessie for Economic Development.
So Jessie's still, was still.
She's working on the old project and she's working on visuals for the website and some other marketing material. It's really very slick. I'll say that in general, the goal is to have an October Economic Development Summit. Details to be announced. But for planning purposes, that feels like tomorrow to me, so it's a little scary. Andrew has made an enormous amount of contacts, important contacts. There's a handful of very strong developers very interested to come to a summit like that. Because they're impressed by what they've heard from Andrew. So now we have to live up to his market.
He's doing a really good job in sales out there.
Yeah, I think so.
We've got to be able to back him.
And I, I think we'll work with, you know, the chair and the vice chair. I'm sure before an October summit, he's going to want to come in and give you some kind of an update and some kind of a preview and ask for your feedback.
Yeah, I'm interested to kind of see.
What he said to me was today, the, someone asked him, what's the audience for a summit? He says, well, it's two audiences. First and foremost, and he actually said this, I'm not making it up, is the Board of Selectmen. They're the ones that are driving this bus, so we have to really understand, you know, what's in their wheelhouse. And secondly, it's private developers. So they understand, they get a picture of the town. You know, we show them what the economic development opportunities are. One of the things Jessie and Andrew were working on today is a very visual way to show all the land that's available in town for sale, public or private. Most towns don't do that. We used to have it in a spreadsheet. Spreadsheet doesn't tell you much. A visual with a map, you can go look at a picture, you see all the details, contact information. That's how economic development happens.
Is that a GAS thing?
Very much, very much so.
Part of that summit, do you organize a little bus tour?
Might have a virtual bus tour.
We'll put VR goggles, we'll have everyone drive.
I want to do a drone tour of Reading, actually. As a marketing piece, a drone would be the right way to go. So. The last group, you're pretty well familiar with cable negotiations and the MWA project. We have a meeting set for two weeks with the MWA, or with North Reading. I'm actually meeting with Mike this Thursday to talk about the IMA just informally. And then, I'm not sure, I think it's, is it Dan and John Arena that are going to those now? I know you used to.
Well, I just couldn't make the last meeting.
I don't know that we've really discussed who should be going to those. I.
I missed one, I've, I've missed one meeting.
Yeah, and John took your place.
Right.
Yeah, I'm interested. It's a topic I'm familiar with and.
So we really need to have only two of you go though.
Okay.
That's all. Just don't want three of you.
You go, you go.
This is another community project, the historical preservation. The, the library either has or will soon apply for a grant.
Actually, I think they did.
They may have just done it recently. They wanted to lead that and obviously, you know, town clerk would be really involved in that. You know, some of you are familiar with what we have in this building downstairs and it's rather appalling. This is right up the library's wheelhouse and this would involve, again, several of your, some of your boards, four or five of your boards getting together and working on a task together.
One of the things that they were talking about is not necessarily like, okay, this is where we'll store archival stuff, but actually looking at the whole town. Sometimes it's, sometimes it could be stuff that's at a church.
Okay, I didn't think of the church, but that's.
Or just things that are, you know, because there are things, historical things in, that are not in our basement that are just scattered throughout the town. Looking at it as a comprehensive piece as opposed to, okay, this is where we'll store something.
Second to last one is the thing we were just discussing quite a bit is what do we do to better prepare our volunteers? And that's still a wide open topic. But I, I threw that in Laura's lap since I know it'll involve open meeting law at least. And then lastly, another one of these groups, I'm not sure how valuable this one is at this time, but we had discussed, again, doing an inventory of community events and trying to decide what role the town has. So Friends and Family Day, if you will, is outsourced. Fall Street Fair is now outsourced. You know, one of the things that the community wants to do, and this definitely revolves around, if you will, economic development. And Jean has a current effort, I think it's called placemaking. I don't understand all these planning terms, so I didn't really get it. But I saw a lot of pretty pictures from other towns. You know, basically it makes your town look a little nicer than maybe it is. And that's good, that's fine. But one of them is community events. I'll tell you, Wakefield does a great job in community events and their government is almost not involved at all, other than Steve goes to them. He's told everywhere to go.
Does it, July 4th activities they have?
Private groups. They do the parade. There's a parade group. There's just, there's a Italian festival that's.
But they're all autonomous. They're all autonomous.
I don't know if they talk to each other. I don't know if it's similar people. I've no idea. I just know they work well.
Similar things happening in Cambridge. I mean, you know, local neighborhood associations and, and business associations. There are events going on in neighborhoods in Cambridge, like the events that go on in Wakefield.
Yeah, we've talked.
Very little government involvement. Some support as, as requested.
Yeah, we've talked internally about creating events, maybe one time. Like the Fall Street Fair was created as a one-time event, probably, when it was first created. To promote it downtown for economic development. Get all the restaurants out there someday. Have a, whatever, Saturday afternoon, Friday night. Salt Lake City does a great one. I've seen it. There's one that lives out there. That night is not a moneymaker for any of the restaurants, but it's, if you will, cheap advertising. And then they start seeing the walk in traffic from the people that, where'd you find us? Oh, I went to that, that fair.
It becomes, Reading becomes a destination as opposed to, I'm going to go to the halftime restaurant.
Well, the Taste of Metro is, is such an event and it creates, it's very little cost to the, to the restaurants. And they all swarm for it. I mean, you know, there's 35 of them in this year.
But that's an intra-event, that's internal. This would be an extra event, kind of outside on a summer night?
Maybe. Did you see Boston this, for the, for the first time, a pizza event?
Yeah.
Thankfully I didn't go. It was, it was over, overbooked.
Yeah, it was very much oversubscribed and a little bit, you know, they had some growing pains, but.
But that shows you an appetite, if you will, for these kinds of things. No reason Reading couldn't call it, have a pizza night.
Surely have enough pizza places.
Surely have enough pizza places.
Oh, also, we have a 375 coming around. That, that concern, bringing a lot of people together.
So I've listed Recreation and Elder Human Services as parts of this. I don't know what it really is going to evolve to. I'll let them discuss for a while and think about it. And then if there's other topics, I tried to think of all the big issues, but we don't always have them on lists and make sure they were tucked in here. But if you've got something that I missed, by all means, let me know. And, you know, if something's not on the list, doesn't mean we won't do it anyways.
I, I did, well, have one, one thing, having been, one of the bigger regrets I had of my tenure in the Board of Health was not really taking the opiate epidemic as seriously as, as I probably should have. And I understand that, that ARCA is going to, has got some data that they're going to be coming out with. It's, it's pretty eye, eye-opening and, and maybe that's something that could fit under community and could would be a, a thing where you have boards, committees working together. In this case, I think, obviously, the police, the ARCA, Board of Health, these are all, you know, it's, it's, it's a health issue, it's an ARCA, ARCA issue. It's a police issue and.
Well, for, for example, in September, that's Awareness Month for ARCA and, you know, like-minded organizations. And there are already a series of events planned. I know I was able to connect them with the Chamber of Commerce, who's going to sponsor an event. And, and, you know, so this comes back to something we talked about up top a little bit. Sometimes just being a central point of coordination so that everybody knows what everybody's doing becomes really valuable to.
Who do I call to do this?
I think this is a, this is a situation where we have relatively young people dying at some frequency that has certainly got my attention. And, and it'd be nice to pool the resources of the Board of Health. One of their members is a substance abuse specialist, the police and ARCA, and get them working together on some, a more aggressive program to deal with.
I, I think it's Sean's point, more information would help you realize a lot of that's already done. Maybe the Board of Health's not involved, but, you know, there is a liaison to the directors meeting if they want to come. The last meeting we had was exclusively on September with all the different events planned. And maybe shame on us for not bringing them to you and talking about them more, but one of the things we've talked about absolutely is the federal grant is up in a year from October. So as part of the budget process, we need to discuss this topic. And honestly, I don't know the answer. Do we build a budget with ARCA in there in the event of a failed override or not? I don't know.
Last time their budget, their grant was up, we stepped out.
Yep. So that's a topic that is, is a financial forum topic because it hits schools in the town.
And that timing of that grant expiration, you will blink. That will be here.
Exactly. It's a year from October.
So.
Yes, please.
I'm Michelle Sankey, 75 Landis Circle, and just the topic of the opiate epidemic is extremely concerning. So also with the three losses that we've had and the Department of Health not having a nurse presently right now is really concerning. So I'm just curious as to what we're doing currently because I know that the loss of life is increasing, not just in Reading, across the state, across the country. And if there were ways that that information, even if it's in a preliminary state, can be reported out, I think that a lot of parents in this community are very, very nervous. We see a lot of information coming from the state level. We don't really see a lot coming from our local government. So if we could think of ways that that could be addressed now and not, you know, waiting for a September of Atlantis. I think that's fabulous. I'm not discrediting any work that anybody's done, but it, it is a really scary topic that I feel like we are not addressing as well as we could.
Well. Every year, I think it's every year, the school does youth risk behavior survey. That's a fairly data-intensive and lengthy analysis period before the data's public. So that's the way, that's the vehicle currently where information is then released and it's a lot of information as opposed to reacting to a specific circumstance. So that's part of this timeframe, but it's, the draft data is now available and being studied.
So will that data be released in August?
I think in September. I think that was against plan because I don't know that it's ready for public yet. It needs to be scrubbed. It's actually much more complicated than it should be to coordinate health data, I guess. Let's say the privacy laws are so large that for Erica to actually look at death certificates is a manual process. There's no state computerized way and the town is not allowed to do anything. She has to physically read certificates of death to help understand the impact of deaths from opiates.
So without.
Just gives you a picture.
Without releasing obviously any confidential information though, does that move into the police law?
I'm sorry, is it going into?
Oh, without, without releasing any confidential information of the, of the privacy of everyone. Is an overdose that takes place in Reading or Reading resident being released to the paper, is that reasonable?
I don't think so. I, I know, I got a text, unfortunately. I don't think it is and I think it's HIPAA.
Reading resident dies in another location other than Reading. There's really not a clear pathway to report that. The only way that you can, so if someone dies of a, of an overdose, for example, in another community or in another state, there's many nearby states. There's not a way for that to find its way into our system except as it's being done manually. So, you know, you, you pull it together, but then, you know, as Bob points out, in order to be able to stay compliant with all of the rules and regulations, that, that material has to be scrubbed and it's got to be, you know, and then come out in presentation form. And that's then, otherwise you'd look at it and it wouldn't make, it'd be like, these people don't know what they're doing. It's not matching. So, so the long story short of it is that what ARCA has been doing now for many years and it's frankly far in advance of almost any other community that is neighbor to us. They come to ARCA on a regular basis in the hopes of finding out how we're gathering information and disseminating it. And that now has been going on for some significant period of time. So, you know, the methodology of the way it's come together is that, that only does find its way out once a year. You're right. And if, if there's, and people rightfully want to react to occurrences. If something happens two or three times in a matter of 90 days, it's like, oh my God, what are we doing? Which is frankly, the way ARCA, ARCA was formed many years ago when several occurrences happened with no oversight body at all. Maybe as long ago as 15, 17, 18 years ago is when the need and the spawn of ARCA came, came to be. So I think it's very difficult to react on the fly. I, I think that Erica's doing a really good job with that, yeah.
I think Erica's doing a fantastic job. I've met Erica, I've attended workshops that Erica has presented. That's not my question or my concern. It's that you see a theft reported in the paper, you would see a murder reported in the paper without having any obligations not to put that in there because of HIPAA. So why can't an overdose be reported in the paper, I guess is my question.
Bob? It's a family privacy issue. If you look at the range of responses by families, they rightfully can take it any way they want. Some families will actually publish in the obituary the cause of death and caution other people. Others wish complete privacy and they just need to deal with their grief in their own way. And that's the reason, is that this is not a crime. This is just a fact of something that happened and it's up to the family to tell us how to treat it. And by default, we treat it as a totally private issue unless they're willing to step out and say, you know, I want you to use this event. And some of them have, but that's why.
Okay. I appreciate your answer and if we can just kind of think of a way to report out more than, yeah, like that.
Thank you, Michelle.
John?
Yes, Andrew.
Just to ask John, come on to John, John Halsey. Scrubbing the data, I understand that obviously they can't release any HIPAA-related information, but if they have the number of deaths in the last fifteen, seventeen years.
Yes.
And they have the year of death, they could, it wouldn't, doesn't take that much more. You don't have to do any scrubbing to simply give a graph or a figure of how many deaths occurred in this year versus the next year.
It's a trend line, probably.
So that we can see a trend.
Except that what's, you know, what's happening is the state would put out one set of docs, one set of information. And because in Redding, we're doing more to find out and to ultimately report, you know, in, as an open way as possible. They don't match necessarily. So there's got to be, the scrubbing is really about building the explanation process of, here's a, here's a set of information that comes out maybe from a state board of health or from the state, you know, itself or from the Attorney General's office. They're coming from a lot of different places. And so I think what we're trying to do is take the information that we have gathered here locally because of the way that we're aggressively doing our best to gather the information and try to act either on it or at least, you know, provide it. At a certain point, you know, I think what is going on right at the moment is an effort to try to have an explanation for why this doesn't match this one and this one. I mean, that's the impression. Bob, you, you come to these committee meetings as I do as well, so.
Yeah, the, the other wrinkle is sort of back to that, if you will, the family privacy kind of approach. Medical examiners and physicians also have different approaches.
Correct.
One ME is gonna write it up this way, another ME, for whatever the reason, gonna write up it different way. So it's actually fairly research intense to narrow down what is really an opioid or substance abuse related death. It'd be awfully nice if there were rules and everyone just followed them, but there aren't.
Right.
But there are more deaths beyond, I mean, the opiate crisis literally is, is the largest cause. But there are, you know, the purview of what Arcasa's trying to work on is substance. And there are more, and you get into that, try to sort out what the medical examiner's gonna say is not the easiest thing to do.
And maybe Arcasa needs to see you more often. You remember the presentation she did, I think it was last January. It was longer than any of us expected, but it was necessary.
It was eye-opening.
It was well over half the meeting.
See, you know, John and I go to these meetings generally once a month or so, so they're a little less surprising to us. But I totally understand that there's just a lack of information out in the community. And maybe that's one of the topics, the selectmen's meetings are probably the best forum for that, honestly, unless we develop a new one.
Well, the natural, the recording feature of what goes on here, for somebody that can't watch it or be here. They know that there's, all of these meetings are available, you know, through the YouTube channel.
Plus the questions that come out. And I presume the material on the screen is now broadcast directly on the screen, so they've got some fidelity in what's been shown, so there's some value in that conversation. I agree with you, John.
And it's, again, it's a, you know, very much a school issue. The schools are very involved in this discussion. So it can be a school committee selectman type of event.
I, I don't, I think that the scrubbing of the data and reviewing the death certificates may be a QAQC question as far as explaining the difference between what Arcasa reports for Redding and versus what DPH, for example, reports for Redding. It's, you're comparing apples and oranges. I think everyone understands that. They don't, DPH doesn't record opiate deaths the same way Arcasa is digging into death certificate. So, so as long as, when she's reviewed the death certificate and interpreted the data, she has a date, a cause of death and, and, and I think that would be helpful for us to know. And I would like to, I just repeat, I would really like, I know, I respect what Arcasa does. I, I know Erica rather well and, and I've gone to some of her, her events. They're fantastic. I think the, 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 the size of the problem and the depth of the problem causes maybe for, it may be a cause for us to step up our game a little bit and, and, you know, start to get more coordination between the Board of Health, the police. I know other, some other cities and towns have started thinking outside of the box to address the problem. It's a big problem.
Yes, if you have a question.
Yeah. Building on what Michelle Sandy said regarding the loss of staff, what efforts are being taken to address the recent departure of the Department of Health?
Bob? We are right now fully staffed with North Reading's health on a temporary basis. I'm meeting with their town manager on Thursday and that's one of the topics is whether we wanna formalize an IMA or not. We have been borrowing, if you will, their health agent while we had a vacancy. We're still borrowing. So we have all the functions covered. Maybe not with a full-time name that's a Redding employee, but we're all set. But that's not a good long-term solution. It just works for now. We're still working out a solution over the next couple of weeks.
Were there other departments as well?
There was a health inspector that retired and there was a public health nurse that left rather quickly with one hour's notice. So we're sharing, or plan to share, I shouldn't say sharing yet, a public health nurse with North Reading for a short period of time and then figuring out what to do. We've got the inspections totally covered, so that's not a problem. So there's not a gap. I mean, there's no gap, if you will, in coverage. Now, I will say that when you're sharing employees in public health, as we've learned, if North Reading and Redding both has the same issue, one would think the North Reading employees might be a little more interested in taking care of North Reading. So we, we understand the risks and that's why we're having the discussion.
So Bob, is that where we're going with this?
I don't think so. I, I, I think, again, to the point of depth, it's good. So I do wanna have some sort of relationship with North Reading, whether it's formal or informal, I really don't care. I think they might want formal. Their, their health director has been absolutely phenomenally helpful for us over the last six months since our health agent left in January rather quickly. Not only has he filled in for the job, he's explained to us the role of what a health division should be, in his estimation. So we've got a lot more depth in planning and thinking. I'm not sure all of this, 'cause I know a lot of it's been discussed with the Board of Health and I haven't been to a meeting in a long time. But in terms of the staff issues, there's not a, there's not a coverage gap there at all. There may not be a long-term solution in place yet, though. Yeah, the comments from the public. Okay, we wanna move to the.
Actually, John, one thing before we do that, so get back on the screen again. Last year, we sort of organized, I mean, we organized around those five broad goals.
Right, the headings.
And sort of assigned, you know, each, each one of the five of us sort of, you know, worked with the appropriate town staff and to be the liaison to, but participant in those things. Do we wanna think through that again?
I'm okay with that. The, the role that was played last year was mostly as a representative of the board attending the meeting. The staff are doing the real heavy lifting. I guess we could do it two ways. We could ask the town manager to make his own suggestions or if you have a preference, you could submit it to the town manager or arbitrary. No, which is, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a proposed way of doing it, but I just thought that, you know, for example, I participated in the planning group that went to all the meetings and participated. Obviously, I didn't do all the work, but participated in, from a board level. I, I'm assuming we're gonna wanna just keep that same model, maybe switch it around a little bit.
How's the rest of the board feeling? John?
Well, I mean, you know, coincidentally, I had finance and I was the chair of the board, which caused Bob and I to be highly interactive and it, you know, and it was good. I, it strikes me that if each of us have a separate role, it improves the integration between staff and, and I think that's something that Bob is gonna be able to evaluate, who's gonna work best with the team that he's got lined up staff-wise, because the staff really drive, they drive this. I mean, that.
Bob? It looked great on paper, five topics, five selectmen. What could be better? And it worked better in some areas than others by design. If you look at operations, you have a liaison to DPW, you have a liaison to the Finance Committee, they're different people. You may or may not have a liaison to the Facilities Department for the security study. I don't know what the best approach is. I think all twenty-five of these ought to have a name, one of your names on them, but I'm not sure that every five in a group belong to one of you, put it that way. That's something I can talk to staff about a little bit and see what their.
That's a good option.
Jean had a question for me today. I honestly don't remember, but she said, can you ask Barry if he would be the liaison for this and I'll figure it out. And you made a great deal of sense. It was some sort of a group of people to look at a planning exercise. I think it was place, creative place making. But that's the only reason I wouldn't automatically slap one name on the five, is because it might be that.
Your judgment, though, as to which name fits on the twenty-five, they don't have to be in bundles of five.
I was just gonna say, I mean.
That's how we did it last year. I, I, you know, I thought it was helpful, but I mean, I agreed. It wasn't, you know.
You didn't do all the topics in there, though, for instance, and again, just looking at the first six schools, you know, they're all finance, but one happens to say operations, 'cause it's policies.
Yeah, I.
I'll come up with a list and you guys see what you think.
All right.
I, I can, I know, to John's point, like if you put me in any one of those categories, some I may not, I may be to be able to do somewhat well or at least cover somewhat well and some would just not be well suited to. I'm a policy wonk at work, so I do, I can talk. But that's, they're spread out through, so I'll, I'll, I'm not gonna be here next meeting, two weeks. And so I'll just send you guys my, what I think.
What I'll do is I'll send you all an email and include Dan with a list and asking for your preferences, you know, are there.
Sure.
List as many as you want out of the twenty-five that you'd like to be involved. That seems like a good start. And then sort of figure it out from there.
Right.
Good.
Well, it kind of puts, if our name is on it, we own it. I think that's important, optically as well as operationally.
Yeah, I had it set up the same way to start and then I wasn't so sure that was the best solution. You wanna move to the evaluation process? Yeah, last year you agreed, or that board agreed to use the same form of evaluation we use for every employee of the town side, which I think is fair to do. So I included last year's review that you did sometime in the fall of May. How you wanna integrate goals into that, I don't know. It's really up to you. I would say, again, from the process you've gone through for a couple of times, the conversation is the valuable part, not what it says on a piece of paper necessarily or what the number is or a score or a letter grade. But it's also a conversation that shouldn't happen once a year. It's like any good situation, it should be ongoing. I shouldn't say, what do you mean? You do, you don't like this. Why didn't you tell me six months ago I had to stop doing this? So for us, on the town side, different departments and then different divisions within departments use the evaluation tool very differently. Some use it very minimally, some use it very detailed. And I'm not gonna give you any more than that, but I will tell you it's not obvious from the groups who would, wouldn't be doing what. And the fact that they don't use the evaluation tool as well as they could do not mean they don't do a good job. They just don't choose to use that as a tool. So what I've discussed in the past and what I've told you, I'll, I'll repeat, I think it's your feedback that's helpful and that should always happen.
One thing is that, I mean, I did like the format of the evaluation. I think I've done two now, maybe?
I think so.
I forget. But the other thing is that every quarter, you do bring back those goals. So it's not like we, we're not talking about it once a year. You know, we are going back and, you know, you put in your percentages of completion and we might add all over, whether it's a fifty or a forty, but, but it's really not even that as much as the detail that goes into what we accomplished, what we didn't get to. And those are being, those are revisited all the time, which I, I think is, I think is helpful. And sometimes we have to, you know, we have to maybe change direction and paddle in a different way, 'cause something else came up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, my feedback is, I like the form. Basically, you know, you're doing a lot of self-evaluation, which I think is important in any type of a evaluation process. And we weigh in pretty, it's a, it was a pretty open, wasn't prescriptive, it wasn't a check-the-box thing. You know, if you read through our evaluations, they were, they were in a lot of different directions.
Yeah.
That's where the value is, is kind of, you know, when we read the, you know, read the pros as opposed to checking the boxes.
Yeah, honestly, I know it's a difficult thing, but I would ask for more. You know, if you're doing it once a year, do as much as you can, as much as you want. You can do it verbally if you'd rather. I don't care. But more feedback's better than less.
Generally, if one of the five of us were upset with the reform, I would imagine that we do, right?
I've noticed a pattern, actually.
I, you know, as far as more feedback is concerned, I talked with a number of people in private industry and this is only something that would work if it would be helpful to you.
Is that the three sixty?
Bob, the three sixty and the, just the idea is, it, it allows managers to be conscious of their strengths and areas of improvement by looking at it through several perspectives, and that is the three sixty, people who report to you, people who you report to. And it's not used as a, as a wet noodle to beat you over the head with, but rather to let you know what other people think are your strengths and, and, because we don't tend to always evaluate ourselves like everybody else does. It'd just be more informational tool for you. There are drawbacks to them. They have to be done. It's simply anonymous leave. So I just put this in the packet for something you consider and, you know, and, and if the board likes it, it would be, it's a, it can't take much time. It'd have to be a one-page thing. And you can look at it and say, oh, seventy, seventy percent of the people think I do this often or frequently, or something like that.
Is that something that reappears back to us once completed?
It's up to the process.
It's up to the process.
I'll tell you that a prior board and a prior town manager, he brought this to them. I think it was ICMA, I don't think it was MMA, but it was some effort professionally to do three sixties.
Yeah.
And so we, he talked about it with the selectmen and I, we were a little surprised. He was more of a top-down manager than me, let's just say. And then he talked to all the department heads, said, I really like your honest feedback. And then we never did it. So I don't know what happened. I don't know why it didn't happen. Maybe he started getting the anonymous feedback, said, well, that's enough of that. I have no idea.
This is your.
One of the things we discussed, though, was one, honest feedback. But the power of anonymity can be a big negative in an organization. So I don't know how you solve that.
Yeah, I mean, they, the articles that I, I printed out address that. And again, it has to be clear upfront that, they don't say this, but it's not used as a wet noodle approach. But, you know.
Well, I mean, we see all the time, the perceived anonymity of social media unleashes, unleashes the beast. And I don't know, and that's okay. I mean, it's America. You can say whatever you wanna say. It's fine. But I don't know that that's necessarily productive. But I don't know that that's necessarily productive to this exercise, but, you know, I.
I think the concept is that, you know, it helps you, you know, great leaders or good leaders, will inspire confidence, um, in employees, and, and if that's not happening, you can take a look at yourself and say, is there anything I wanna change? Maybe not, I don't know. Just, it's a, it's an opportunity for, I think they say, growth in a job.
Well, I think that's something, Bob, if you decide that that's something that would be valuable to you, to better do your job, that's one thing. I think the idea of incorporating into what we use in our evaluation of your interaction with us is, you know, i- is not necessarily, I mean, I don't, I don't see that coming into what we would do with Bob. If Bob chooses.
I'd do an evaluation for, of Shannon, as her manager, even though I don't hire her, you do. I would never share that evaluation with you, ever. That's a private document.
Yes.
If I had to do it in public, it would be different, that's all. Materially different, but, um, so there's the public-private wall that's exists. I think the three sixty idea, I hadn't thought about it till you sent me that article since Peter talked about it on HR Wonk. Um, I like the idea of getting feedback from department heads. I don't know the best method to get it, and I'm not sure if the feedback I would get privately would be the same as you would get publicly.
Well.
I prefer to have the more honest, probably the private part.
Yes.
So I'll ask the department heads if they wanna go off in a corner and talk about it themselves, and they would find some value in doing either individual, same form, rank me each, or one of you do a summary and put it all together, see what they wanna do, see what they think, 'cause they're.
I think that's a call that you make, and I think it has to be, I personally think it needs to be separate from what we do, because everything we do with Bob is in the public. And that's fine, I, you know, I, and I think it's appropriate, because we are the, technically, the people that hire you, um, and therefore, and we're hired by the people, and therefore, that process should remain completely transparent, completely wide open.
Yeah, assuming the department heads would do this and do an honest job, I would personally be fascinated by how they would differ from you on the same set of facts.
The trouble with this is we live in different worlds. We, we see you, you know, four hours, once every, or twice a month. They're there, um, full-time employees and much more interactive. This is more useful. I've seen this used principally with new managers coming into their first supervisory role, where they get feedback from their new directs, feedback from their, um, their, their superiors, and they can kind of figure out where they are in their growth patterns, as they kind of take off into a more supervisory role. I've not seen it used at senior levels of organizations, because frankly, the things that got people to where they are in their careers are usually their strengths. And more often than not, those strengths end up being weaknesses in different settings. You know, somebody who's a good authoritarian works great when you need authority, but other settings, it's a, it's a weakness. So you kind of get weird feedback, which says, you know, you're really gonna solve this authoritarian problem. Yeah, but I'm the CEO, that's my job, right? It, it's that kind of weird feedback, it's not actionable, but somebody who's kind of just starting off, you can kind of get this, uh, perspective more broadly about people, like, how am I doing as a boss? And how am I doing as a, as a reporter now? That's why I think in your own organizations, it might be interesting. It's, it's kind of bottoms up, but it might be.
If it was honest, it would be interesting. If it wasn't honest, it would be pointless, and that's.
Correct.
I like to think that we, all of us, have a good, honest relationship with every department head right now. Um, so I'm, I'm pretty sure it'd be an honest evaluation in private. I don't think they would say the same things to you, better or worse.
I think you're right.
And they're not, the questions aren't, are you, are you a dictator, or are you a, a state marshmallow? I mean, they're more, uh, leadership-based or managerial-based, things that are somewhat, not innocuous, but nonjudgmental and just.
Style of question.
I, I see this in this person frequently. Oh, that's a strength of mine. I see this in this person less frequently. Anyway, I, you can read them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to this Thursday at the department meeting. It does bring to mind, one, the only surprise I had in my last evaluation, which isn't bad, there's only one, was a, a topic, I think it was called change management. And I think four of you said I did whatever the middle category was, and one said, good. And, um, I got some rather loud feedback from some department heads saying, does the selectmen pay any attention? I said, wait a minute. They're pretty much all private sector guys. When they wanna change something, they just change it, it's not a big deal.
Right.
They don't understand how difficult it is to change something.
Right.
So, that grade is totally fair, based on where they're coming from.
It's perspective, yeah.
It's perspective. Um, but that's another thing where you have to understand the audience on both sides to understand evaluation.
I could imagine in a civic setting, this is where the change, the rate of change we're experiencing is revolutionary. You don't see this in most.
It is.
Municipal organizations.
Yeah.
And I personally like it. I like that kind of rapid agile approach. Any other questions before we move on?
So what's the timeline on this?
It's up to you. It's your process. Um, I think last year, did you have Dan or something appointed as the data gatherer?
Yes. Dan collected the data, assembled it into.
That'd be another good thing.
Yeah, at least, he's not here, so.
Just appoint Dan.
Yeah, that's it. Be sick of that.
You tell me what you need, and, you know, honestly, I wanna find some way to get department head feedback into you. I just don't know the right way. You deserve to have that, even if it's not on camera, in some way.
Yeah, 'cause the thing is, we don't, we don't, we see you in this, and we see you in this, we don't see.
Not in the heat of battle, right?
Right, exactly.
And, and that's, and, and we don't, as part of our process, we don't interview department heads, hey, how's Bob doing?
Right.
You know, is that our rule? I don't think so.
It's not our job.
Most of them would be very uncomfortable if you asked that question, honestly.
But still.
But it's legit, I know.
Yeah, it's a legit question, but you're right. You don't wanna put a spotlight.
So why is that a legit question? I don't think that's a legit question at all.
I think because.
We hire him, he hires them.
You need to make the evaluation yourselves, and you use whatever information tools you have.
Correct. Those that are available to us are the ones that we would use. I mean, the idea, I mean, when you hire an executive director, um, that's who the, that's who manages the staff.
And you get, you gauge based on results and inputs, and did you get what you expected? If you start asking the second, third level, one, you don't know what to do with the data. Two, I guarantee you, somebody in there, somebody's gonna throw a ringer at you. What do you do with that data?
Well, it, but you, you, I think you anticipate there may always be a ringer.
But what are you gonna do with the data? What would you do with the data?
Well, we, we use our judgment. And I think that it's, I think it's important in every institution to understand how the entire organization views itself. It goes to morale, it goes to productivity, it goes, yes, I mean, there are endpoint results that we can point to and say, we accomplished these twenty-five goals this year. But is it possible to accomplish more? Or, you know, are we accomplishing it in an efficient manner as can be? Just, it's just.
I mean, you're right, you look at the twenty-five goals, yep, we hit those, those are good, and, but if everyone who works in town government thinks the town manager's an SOB.
Exactly.
That obviously has implications that, you know, we're looking at, well, did the goal, did the work get done? I'm not saying it's, we'll do anything with that, but it's, it's important to know.
I'm just responding to the thought that we would reach out or, or.
No, I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I, I, but it would be nice to see the feedback or something.
I'm just getting some water, John.
I gotta hobble over. No, no, I'm not, I'm not helpless. Thanks, Barry.
Because when I evaluate department heads, I don't ask anyone else's opinion, at all. I work with them, that's my responsibility. Um, I would never ask any subordinate to evaluate their.
I, I think to.
But that doesn't, that doesn't, that's just me. I just wouldn't do it. Doesn't mean it's wrong.
I do the same thing.
I figure that's my responsibility to understand how good a job X is doing, and I have to, I'm never gonna know all the things, and by the way, I also ask them to fill out some stuff to help me. Um, you know, we'll have, usually they each get about five goals. Um, and I'll be familiar with maybe three or four, and I'll, I'll look at the fifth one and go, I don't even remember I gave you that, what have you done? And so it's helpful, so there's a back-and-forth, um, exchange. But otherwise, it's my responsibility to then gather all the information that I didn't know and make a judgment. And I do. And, you know, we talk about it. Again, it's the discussion that's the valuable part.
The exercise of taking those twenty-five and assigning them, not in blocks, but to us, will give us, I think, much more insight than an interview process with Bob's subordinates. I think that would be a highly inappropriate thing to do.
Okay. Anything else on this topic?
No, I'll, I'll come back to it with what I hear out of department heads. I'll trust their judgment.
Alright. Should we move on? Next on the agenda is, um, each of us responded to a, a survey that Barry had generated. I had, um, taken a few efforts to, to flow, and each of you had your own comments, and I think a version of it is in tonight's packet.
Yeah, and just so you know, I have everyone's originals, so I, if you wanna go back to your original comments, I can do that.
It's just slide, uh, one eighty-nine in tonight's packet. So, I guess the subject matter for tonight is, are we ready to go live with this? Or is there, and anyone have any, any, um, further comments that you think without which this is a fatally injured? Bob?
I wanna answer, I don't remember honestly, I think it was Barry, that I don't know what technology tools we have. I know Recreation has used Survey Monkey, I know I've used something else through our website. Fairly certain, we're gonna use some product that does cross-tabulations.
Okay.
It would not be a good outcome if we couldn't do that.
Yeah.
I don't know the details.
Any other comments by members of the board on the way it's constructed here? There are two extra questions that Bob had nominated. And Bob, thank you for modifying question eight, 'cause all of us stopped at sixty-five.
I think one of you, maybe Dan suggested.
Yeah, and, and of course, the discussion we had on, uh, aging and, and Reading makes us very aware that there are a couple of brackets above that. So, if there are no other comments, I'll.
I, I actually just, I, I mean, if there's any way to get this in one page, probably, it may not matter if it's a Survey Monkey. But I, could someone help me understand the difference between five and six?
I think five is saying, as you sit here today, Mr. Survey Taker.
Yeah.
Beware that Reading compares itself to twenty-five other peer communities. As you sit here today, what do you think Reading's annual tax bill compared to one of the, what are the other communities relative to Reading's tax bill is? You may not know, which is F.
Right.
But if you do know, what would, or you would like to care to guess.
Or you just have an opinion or a sense.
Opinion, what would you think?
And how does that help us? Go ahead.
Because the reason for that question is, I ran into so many people through the last override discussion that believe the tax bills in Reading were astronomically high compared to the other towns. We're not gonna say.
We're not gonna say the answer.
But I said, okay, that's, nothing wrong with having that opinion.
Right, so, uh, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I think it's a, it's a, we didn't, you know, you added this.
Very cleverly done.
Because it's sort of like, and especially if we have the ability to cross-tabulate. There may be somebody that says, well, I think our tax bill is X amount of dollars higher, therefore, I will only support a tax bill of X minus higher on an overall.
It tells you you have an information problem, where people say, hell no, and yet they say, you know.
But based on information that that may not be fact.
Correct, correct. That's actually a very clever question.
Yeah, I, I, thanks, no.
Thanks, Bob. I don't know that I may not need to word it, so it makes more sense. It seems like a lot of clumsy words.
Uh, maybe, but the concept is sound. And then, um, six is simply to establish kind of the appetite for, for change.
That I got. I just, I, I, it was the combo.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I, just on seven D, um, I would make a minor change. Um, I would say, I had children attend Reading Public Schools, but not attend today.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I agree.
They may not have graduated.
Right.
They may have moved off to somewhere else, or gone to.
And I have a question about two A, subpart A, maybe we're gonna change the subpart, but, two A, if you voted yes, please circle all of that apply. Um, are, let me see. A and B equivalent to C and D?
My thinking was, and I think I had this discussion with maybe Dan.
Yeah.
Um, the override was October, if I had that right.
Yeah.
So as you walked into the booth, there was already some cuts that had happened in the past.
Mm-hmm.
You're concerned, is that why you voted?
Oh, it's rearward-looking, this is forward-looking.
And then.
Okay.
C and D are, I was more worried about what you were gonna do.
Ah.
As of October.
So you could conceivably circle all four.
So today, you wouldn't have a need to ask four questions, you'd just say, what are you worried about?
Right, right. Would changing recent to simply past?
Maybe.
Be, be.
Or past and future, so that the context.
Previous?
Yeah, but, but proposed is, as you say, looking forward. Well, back in October was looking forward.
Past and future, right? Past cuts to town budget.
No, I, my sense was A and B were histor- historical.
Right.
And C and D were in the future.
Right, so if you said.
There's just gotta be a better way to say that, 'cause recent now does feel like what happened.
Maybe historical or past.
Why don't you say historical and future? Historical cuts, historical cuts, future cuts, future cuts. That's a good catch, Andy.
Yeah, it is.
There's a science to this, picking the right words, too.
I'll do that for both.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm happy to pull the trigger on this whenever, um.
Any other, um, what was the, what was the comment we just made a moment ago about, um?
I have a question, but I gotta, I don't remember it.
Yeah, seven D, we're gonna edit that as well.
This was, um, this was published in many locations, and I think highly appropriately, um, in social media, today. And the urging was that if people from the public had an interest in giving some input, and I think we should call for that.
We will, I just wanna, I just wanna get our comments in here. We'll go to public here in a minute. Any other comments from the board? Seven, uh, seven D was the, was the graduate question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have children, oh, you already got, good, okay. Any other comments from the board? Comments from the public, yes?
I'm Erin Gaffin, fifteen, in Lock Road. Um, forgive me, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Uh, first one was, um, was anyone from the school committee? I know it came up at your joint meeting that, uh, they were hoping to see a copy of this. Ultimately, did that happen? Were they consulted about this?
Um, I didn't involve the schools, the, I don't know, Bob, have you had any discussions with John on this?
No, they would've seen this information just as, as they normally would any selectman. I didn't go out of my way to say, here's a survey, what do you think?
This is strictly on the override question itself, which is, um, in our purview. Um, this is not the last survey, though. This'll probably run for a term and then we'll have a, a second attempt, or second effort to generate a follow-up survey, most likely in the fall.
Okay.
So, uh, it'd be perfectly reasonable to take the results of the first one, use that to inform our second one as it relates to feedback we might get from this.
Um, so that leads me to another question, is what is your plan for the results from this? Is it something that you would share publicly?
I think so. Once we have a statistically enough survey result, if you have a few dozen, it really doesn't tell you very much, but if you had hundreds, I think it starts to trend in the right direction. I would imagine that a meeting like this would present the data in some reasonable form, cross-tabulated, so you can see if you answered yes to why, or one, you got something else for two. Yes.
So do you have a baseline number in mind that you're holding for response?
I don't think we thought that far ahead, that we've spent more time trying to get this written in a way that's easy to understand and you're done in ten minutes, and we'll see what we get. We're kind of, this is our first attempt, so we didn't wanna overthink the process.
So related to that, um, at first glance, some of the responses could be perceived as leading. If, are you doing, like, why not leave them open-ended? Are you doing that so that it's faster for people to reply to? Or, why not, why not just say, if you go to yes, why? If you go to no, why?
Funny, that's why I kept, that's how my response was, and Barry felt strongly, we should give him a couple of hints to at least start the conversation.
Well, just some of the things that we kinda heard, but, but if you notice, all of the other questions sort of leave an other and gives people a chance to, you know, to do it. I mean, we tried to, at least, when I wrote it, I tried to not, not sort of, um, kind of lead people by the nose on what to say, but these are the things that we heard, I mean, just.
We've heard these before, so if they're major categories, if we can, they can at least click A, you've got fifty percent of the folks that have that opinion, and the other is there if they don't. You can go either way in this, but if they're all others, we gotta read them all and categorize them ourselves. And so, not having at least some granularity. And so not having at least some granularity makes it hard to tabulate.
When I first wrote it, I put some of those things, I sort of say rank.
Right.
What was the most important?
Number one, number two, number three.
And I just think that, you know, when we talked about it, it was kind of like, well, let's just find out for yourself.
Give me your top ones.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, yes. So you hit number six, where you're asking people for their appetite for now. I understand why you're interested in that information. How much do you think that will actually inform your decision? I can imagine there's at least a certain amount that you would have to put forth in order for this to last a few years.
So I think the stimulus behind that was last year, the last override, the impact to the average tax bill was eleven hundred, eleven fifty?
Well, a thousand, with senior tax relief.
It was over a thousand.
Yeah, it was over a thousand. So the thought here is, is the appetite in the main, in the average, is it substantially different? Obviously, folks said no, strongly, that a thousand, eleven hundred with senior tax relief included was a no. I'm just curious if appetite has changed here, that's all, we have no idea. This is not a leading question, it's literally, how do you think now in two thousand seventeen, with another year under your belt?
It was very interesting. I mean, to, the year before we proposed the override, Dan made the state of the town, and he used the voting tool that we have. And that voting tool was, the sampling group was, it was town meeting. And the number that they, it was, he articulated it in percentage rather than, and it was very interesting. Those things lined up in a very similar way, percentage-wise, compared to what those numbers are.
Yeah.
And the number was in the CD area, or the choice of the town meeting was in the CD area. Frankly, and from my perspective, having seen that and had that information, when we looked at the proposals for the last override, my strong recommendation was that we take at least a million dollars out of it, maybe more, so that we could get down into a range that the test group had shown us, you know, might be, now, it came down some, but it obviously didn't come down enough. So I think there's a value to this thing. People may tell you, if we get a big enough cross sampling, which is always the test.
And I'd add to that, that when we had the elder services group in here a few weeks ago, I was astounded to see the number of Reading residents that are retired, elderly in their homes. It was thirty percent or sixty-five and older, and the demographics likely to grow. Many of those people, I don't think, were necessarily in town meeting, they may be underrepresented. So that's actually an attempt to sample that here, is if you take a broader sample, how much of the folks that are either on fixed incomes or post-full-time employment have a different view than, say, the hundred ninety-two that were in town meeting?
Sure. So that leads me to my final question. How are you planning on distributing this, so that you do ensure you've got a wide cross-section in town?
I think the thought is a couple ways. One is to do it on the web, through the Survey Monkey or similar. I think we could do it on paper, to the extent folks are more comfortable there. I mean, if it's a small number, we could do it through elder services, those could be manually tabulated. There's no identifying information on this, so, and those could then be manually entered by somebody else at a Survey Monkey, so we can still tabulate them correctly. I don't know if you have any other ideas?
Yeah, we can have, you know, the staff at the senior center, you know, set up a couple of monitors, so people can come and do them themselves.
With some guidance and training, so.
The idea is, I'd like to see it done really all electronically, only so that you don't have, like, all-star balloting, where you vote twenty-five times for boogie bets. I mean, you want, you want it to be, you know, you want it to be statistically relevant. I mean, it's not, it's not a statistical poll, but you at least have enough, you don't want people voting twenty-five times and skewing the results.
Survey Monkey has a mechanism, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't let you vote.
It does, yeah. So doing it electronically is probably better than, I think when the library did theirs, I think it was a paper ballot. I remember, I remember filling mine out at like a town game.
No, I will tell you that-
They had a lot of results.
Paper ballots are a lot of work for staff, then, put together.
Absolutely. And you got to-
Someone's got to tabulate them, and especially with these, I mean, where we're, the value of this survey is not so much how many people would vote yes if it was five hundred dollars, or how many people who are over sixty-five would vote yes. I mean, you're getting sort of the cross tabs to sort of figure out where certain, where people are. And I think that's valuable, because that one sort of structure what's the right, what's the right thing. We don't want to put something out that's not going to pass, but just structure it in a way that kind of, I'm not saying, myself personally, I'm not saying I'd be governed a hundred percent by the results of this survey. I'd be certainly guided by it, not necessarily governed by it, because sometimes the right thing to do is to me, you know, maybe do something that, you know, some folks have to kind of stray at the collar a little bit, but it, but it is still the right thing to do, so. That's how I look at the value.
It may also be a thing, it may also be a tool, once the, once the data is collected, that helps you understand how to get the message out, which is really, in my opinion, this is more valuable as a tool in that direction than it is telling me, you know, what number I endorse and vote for, frankly. I mean, this kind of information, if we get, one of the best, one of the, one of the best-done surveys, community surveys that I've seen in recent memory, was about the Birch Meadow project. And the return was, it was a budding neighbors. The return was about three percent, which is a staggering number in a relative way. And if we could get to one percent with this, we've got eighteen thousand voters. If we could get to one percent, it would tell us a lot about how to present this on the other end, whatever the number is. So that's the way I see this thing. I mean, that question eight is really important.
Bob?
Yeah, I think the real power and the value of this survey is not an answer to any of the questions, it's all into relationship between the issues. You can look at it and say, oh, look at this, the so-and-so's that did this before are now thinking this. It's just an education for all of us. As it is, as has been said, it's difficult to communicate with people in this day and age, there's so many different ways. This is tremendous feedback that people can give to the board. Even though it seems like ten simple questions, the intricacy of how they're linked is really helpful.
Particularly like, as it opens up in question one, the question is, how did you do it before, and what would you do differently now? What would drive you there? That's probably the most interesting piece of data for us.
What they need to get from A to B.
And it's only one tool. I mean, you know, Dan has brought up on a number of occasions, and I really think he's right.
Oh, yeah.
Focus groups of maybe no more than a dozen people from a real cross-section. This will help us drive towards inviting a cross-section of people into these small focus groups. And, you know, I mean, so for example, we could separate in five directions, and each do five focus groups over the course of the fall, based on the data that we find here. And what you end up with is unbelievable face-to-face feedback. This, I think, will help us construct those. So I think this is one tool in the bigger, in the bigger project of awareness and voter opportunity to give input.
And then, as it's already happened, the results of this survey, the survey itself and the results from it, they're now amended with red lettering version, anyway. And the results of it, we hope will go to social media, and that'll be another way of awareness. So.
I do want to be clear, I'm thrilled that you are doing this, and I very much look forward to seeing what kind of response comes.
I know there's been frustration that it hasn't happened sooner. It's taken a while. One, we don't work outside of this meeting, we work through Bob, so there's a time component to it. And two, I'd rather get it right than get it wrong. But I appreciate folks sticking with us.
None of us are pollsters, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming in, Erin. Yes, Vanessa? You can, you don't have to come up.
Hi, I have several questions, so bear with me.
Sure.
So generally speaking, a survey, in order to have a relatively high level of confidence in the results, you need to have about a sample size of sixty percent of your target audience, which in our situation is about, what's it, twelve thousand?
Yes.
Voting residents? So what happens if you don't reach anywhere? If you have a thousand results, how are you weighting this, so that it's relative?
It's a hypothetical-
The margin of error.
Yeah, I understand. I'm not sure you need sixty percent for trending. If I've got, if I've got ten or fifteen percent, it's a random collected data, I can still tell where the population is going. I may not have perfectly accurate, but it's directionally correct.
Are you suggesting that sixty percent need to respond?
She's making the observation that that's-
It's just an observation, yeah. So I, I'm curious if we get a thousand people instead of five thousand or six thousand.
Well, let's see.
My concern is if, if this results are, if the pool is so small, results could skew, and a very legitimate thing is going, if this feedback's going to guide the more of the selectmen, I'd be concerned about.
It's hard to know, because we don't know what the data is. I think your point's a valid one. If we only get a couple hundred, I think it's largely going to be a disappointment. I'm not sure what conclusions you make out if you have a couple hundred, if you have a couple, remember, sixty-eight hundred people voted for the override, and that determined the outcome for everyone. So if you got ten percent, which would be one-third of the sixty-eight hundred, ten percent of the voters, that's enough to tell where the voting, the vote goes.
When they do, when they do the presidential polls, you know, they'll pull six hundred people in New Hampshire to win the primary. Now, granted, it's done more scientifically and statistically-
The right six hundred.
Better than what we're doing.
They get paid more than we do.
But if we can get it out there to a large number of people, again, it's kind of, I mean, there'll be trends that we can, we can tell from this.
And the social media part of it, I think, can't be underestimated. This is going to foster a lot of conversation on Facebook, and that conversation alone is going to be useful. It may not tell us much, but I think it's going to get the thought creation and conversation going. We've just got to figure out how to do it for people that don't use computers regularly, the folks that-
I thought that's where you were going, is that if we could get this survey available for completion to sixty percent of the constituents.
That's what I thought she meant, too.
Because honestly, I mean, these surveys-
We're making sure we've reached broad enough audience that we're not only doing it if we're only, I mean, but-
No, no, I agree with you. So if we, if we give, if we're certain that sixty percent of the voting, the available voters have the opportunity to complete this in one form or another, and that's twelve thousand, and we get one percent of that, if we get twelve hundred, that, that is, that is a big home run.
I think we might get one.
No, I'm just saying, you know.
Are you, is one of the points that you're getting at, is that if you have a small sample size, and that it skews towards-
Younger people.
Twenty to thirty-five-year-olds, we're going to get a different answer than if had it skewed to, towards somewhat younger people in the fifty, in their fifties.
Although it's cross-tabulated, although it's cross-tabulated, so we'll be able to figure that out.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right, we'd have to, we'd have to take that into account.
We'll be able to, we'll be able to normalize for age group and normalize for any of these questions.
And I think you also have to take some of these things with not a grain of salt, but in perspective, for example, if people say, I didn't understand what the schools were selling me, it's a lot harder to understand the school budget than it is the town budget, at least it was for me. So, so that's not a black or white answer, it just helps us get a sense for.
So, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
I do have some questions regarding the phrasing of some of these-
Sure, go ahead.
Survey, um, my concern is, for two A, two B, three, and seven, we separate out the town versus the school. And we have one budget, we don't have two, and we are one town. My concern is that if we're splitting it or divide, it's a divisive point, because the town, the town budget doesn't function that way. We can't, it splits naturally amongst all of the departments, the town just have, the school just happens to be one of them. So are we creating a bias in a way being pre-raised?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I mean, there were different versions of this, but I think it's important for people, there are people, to some, to some people, you know, the schools are the most important. To other people, the schools are important, but maybe they're concerned about all the services. So I think it was important that we sort of break out, not saying, well, we're only going to fund one versus another, but just to kind of see where people's heads were about what people's concerns were. Are they more concerned about some of the town cuts and potential town cuts than they are schools, or vice versa? Doesn't mean that we're going to go in one direction more than another, but again, this is just more information. What are, you know, we're trying to basically get inside the heads of the locals.
I could add to that, one of the comments that I know was heard during the school budget process was, if I had known these were the details, I would have voted. This gives them an opportunity, again, through cross-tabulation, to see who voted, who didn't vote, and what do they care about. Again, you know, you're trying to learn, you're trying to gather information, trying to understand, why didn't you vote? And if there's a high number of people who didn't vote, and now they're concerned about the schools, you can infer that they're more likely to vote.
I mean, I think that is the point, just to collect information as far as it comes specifically to schools. You know, I know that we have mentioned at the FinCom meeting on June twenty-ninth, that the chairs would get together with selectmen, or, I think, with the school committee to discuss some of these questions. I can't help but think that they would have input on how some of these are framed, since one of them specifically addresses whether you have children. Is that ever hoped to be made in advance of this survey?
I think it's our intention to get this survey out as soon as possible.
I think so. I don't think this is, none of this is meant to be pejorative. This is frankly to understand how the, what the granularity is in the electorate, and to discover, to John's point, if there's a group that we have the message to, this is going to elicit it, and we're going to say, you know, we got a problem over here, let's go address it. Whereas if we do it as one, I don't think you're going to get that granularity, I don't think you're going to see it in a form that you can act on it. So I don't, none of this is meant to be disruptive. I'm interested if folks think differently, having now slept on it.
Yeah.
Barry, this was one of your ideas. Are you still okay with it?
Yeah, and I think it's really important, if, you know, we know how parents of school-aged children in town feel about the override, right? What I don't really understand are the, are the folks whose kids graduated from Reading High five years ago and are seven years away from retiring. I don't know how they feel. I want to know how they feel, and I want to know sort of why they voted the way they did, and if they voted no, why they did, and how we can get them to a yes. That's important information, and it's, you know, in any campaign, you run any political campaign, it's the information that you collect that's important, and it helps you kind of tone and hone your message, and get information out to people who may, may not be getting it. So that's why-
Would the school committee be a great ally in honing that message, since it specifically pertains to the school?
I think my take on that would be, in the second round, where we take this raw data in and say, what do we do with it next? That'd be a great time to fix that, because that's going to, we're going to have, one, evidence that it's a problem, and two, need to involve them, let's assume for the moment it is a problem.
Couldn't we avoid the, perhaps, if some of the language is biased, we involve the school committee now, couldn't we potentially avoid biased language?
I don't think this is biased.
In the same way-
One at a time.
But how do we know if they're not biased?
As a practical matter, the next school committee meeting is the very end of July, so you're going to add at least another month onto this process.
Not necessarily, not if the chairs and vice-chairs met.
That's not a committee meeting, that's just two people.
I understand, I understand. But two things, I mean, part of the value of the survey is letting the people, the people of the town of Reading know that we care about what they think. And that goes a long way in helping an override get passed, to the extent we need it. And, and I think that, you know, one of the school committee members at the FinCom meeting expressed his desire to sit down and talk about some of the questions. What does it hurt? And then, in the end, it's our survey, and you can say, well, we feel strongly about, but at least they've been heard, and then you guys can put out the survey.
We can put out the survey. I'm inclined to do something earlier that's imperfect, to get early data, and worry about the second one being the final, just where my head's at. I could see how you could read this differently, but I think we've tried hard not to make it disruptive, and more just to elicit where people's heads are at. Bob?
And yet, I've specifically said that some of the language, as I'm reading it, is biased.
Take me to an example.
Two A, where we specifically separate out the school and town portions of the budget, when we talked about- Two A, where we specifically separate out the school and town portions of the budget, uh, when we talked about whether children are in the schools. And we have, and I, based on the population of the school, of the town, and how many students are in the schools, we know the percentage of people. I, you know, question seven to me, I don't understand its purpose.
Let's go back to two. What's the problem with two?
As I just mentioned, that we're separating out the town versus the school.
But there are people who have strong feelings about different aspects of their municipal services. Don't you wanna know if, how people vote, like, what they're concerned about, whether they're more concerned about, whether they're concerned about public safety and school? Don't you wanna know, don't you wanna learn that information?
Um, well, but there's many departments. Elder Services isn't listed here, other community services aren't listed here. Um, it, it's very clearly divided into town versus school.
That's how the budget is put together, though. Are you worried that this is somehow coloring the discussion?
Or lead to-
Biased in.
Or you, or leading to an output that-
But you're not asking for priorities.
No.
And that actually, one of the versions, we did, did do that, and we decided not to.
Yeah.
I, my name's Michelle Sampey, I'm running a circle. Um, I have three children in the school system. I have concerns about number two and how it's split town and schools. Certainly am interested in information from the entire community, but as a parent, knowing that the school committee has not seen this, has had no input in it, I most likely won't take the survey.
That's unfortunate.
It is, it really is. And, and that's probably what I'll share with my friends, too, because I feel like it is divisive. And I, I watched that meeting the other evening, and I heard three times it was said that the chair or the vice chair of the school committee was going to have some kind of communication, and I'm really disappointed.
This is the first time this board has seen this version, so practically speaking, couldn't have had the conversation prior to tonight. This version didn't exist, um, in public until Hackett came up, so.
And it's all over social media.
That's not an eye control, but once it's out, it's out.
There was a similar s- survey. I, I just, I mean, I'm perfectly happy leaving it in your and Barry's hands and sitting down with you and Elaine and, and then, and going through it as soon as you can, and then get it out. I don't wanna, again, I don't wanna hold the process up either.
I'm fine with that, too. I, I don't know how to proceed, though, if there's a disagreement on whether you separate it or not.
Well, ultimately, it's your survey. It's, it's our survey, right?
Correct, so therefore, you can inform them, but if there's a disagreement, what, are you gonna act on the disagreement or not? If you're not, then it's a courtesy, but it's not ins-
You have the conversation, and if they don't convince you, they don't convince you.
But also, can, and I, again, I don't speak for the school committee here at all, obviously, um, but if this is a board of selectmen survey, and yet we want to reach a wide audience, presumably the school committee would help in dissemination of it. And I don't know, I would not feel comfortable disseminating a survey that I had had no info.
We had no thought whatsoever to have the school committee disseminate this. It's summer.
The thought was to get this out, get some data over the summer, that in September would have at least an initial set we could act on, and then, uh, one, do a revised survey if we needed to, based on something that maybe popped up that we didn't understand, and two, start to work on our messaging. I don't wanna lose the summer. I know it's kind of a soft point, but over the three months, I think we can do a pretty good job getting, reaching adults. I hear what you're saying. I'm happy to meet, and Barry, I'm sure you're happy to meet with Gene and Chuck.
I'm happy to sit.
I just don't know what to do if there's a disagreement.
I mean, at that point, it's a discussion between, given how significant the school part of this is, I mean, at that point, it's between the chairs and the vice chairs to have the conversation about how we ask, who to see.
I, I will say in our defense, I don't think there's any attempt to color the discussion. This is purely to figure out for the respondent, is your driver one or the other or both, and is it backward looking or forward looking? It's no more scientific than that.
And I, I don't mean to imply that it's potentially biased, and I'm saying, I just think they should provide him. I'm gonna table this one for now, because I have other items.
Okay.
Uh, so.
Actually, before you go on, Vanessa, what does the board wanna do? Does the board have an opinion here tonight? Have you heard input from the, from the public? Not a vote, but just what's your opinion? John?
My opinion is that this is a, this is not designed as a marketing piece to drive somebody's decision in one direction or another. It's designed to collect information, and I think it's been really well thought through. I, I actually think that, I mean, I offered a couple of ideas, but I have no pride of authorship in this whatsoever, but I think that this will collect a lot of information and get to the visceral feeling that, and I think, Barry, that's what you were hoping for. And to me, the sooner you have your hands on as much of that information as possible, it allows you to react to that data once collected, so that you can proceed with the next step in this process. So to me, you know, um, being, because it's, I, I mean, the board of selectmen have to decide several things. When and where to put a question out, and what the question will be, and how much it will be. In order to be able to do that, personally, I want as much information as quickly as possible, so that we can not only take that step, but then react in a way that allows us to drive the process towards success. The idea that people who I think, I thought had a common interest with us in better funding the town in a, in an appropriate way, would wanna participate, not, not boycott. But that's just my thought. I mean, I, I think more information, as visceral as possible, is really valuable at this step in the, in the, in the, in the process.
Just to amplify that, you triggered a thought. I do think we may, we reserve the right to ask difficult questions that may be viewed as, um, differently by different people, because to John's point, if we gotta know it, I'm not, I'm not gonna fail to ask a question and be ignorant as a result. We don't, we can't, we gotta get this right, and if something pops out of this that deserves more inquiry, and that leads to a second set of questions, if the data's more important, we gotta be polite, and we gotta be prescriptive, and we gotta be accurate, and we've gotta make sure we don't have any unintended consequences. But we, we gotta also reserve the right to ask hard questions if they've gotta be asked. I don't think any of these here are that, they weren't intended as that, but if, if truly a hard question came up, like, gee, in our Septem, in our, um, summer survey, sixty percent of the population said they didn't wanna fund the town, we might come up with a second survey that tried to put some more, you know, tease out of that why. And there might be some hard questions in there. Is it, you know, is it a problem with the police, a problem with the fire, is it a problem with elder services you don't like? I'm making this up, these are all hypotheticals. I imagine that would be viewed as very negative, but those sorts of questions would have to get our heads around before we ask for another override, 'cause you're, there's something out there we don't see and we don't understand.
And exactly my reason for thinking that, absolutely, we should, as John mentioned, we should all be on the same page, and it should be moving forward. And what better way to do that than to involve those groups, those, the boards, committees, commissions, that are most going to be affected by the override, or by their own.
If you guys are okay with the edits we've made tonight and the final version, I'm happy. Barry, we'll find some time with Gene and, I'm sorry, Elaine and-
I, I have one more.
Sure, go ahead.
Hey, could I just weigh in really quick?
Sure. I'm sorry, we didn't go around the table. Are you okay?
No, I, I don't find, I'm, I'm just, I'm scratching my head here. I'm trying to, I'm going through these questions, and I'm trying to find out what, what about these questions are so, you know, leading in one direction or another, you know? Again, to, you know, we've been asked to do this and get things going and move the schedule up to leave time to campaign for an override. So this is the information that we need to kinda move this forward, so, um, but again, I'm happy to talk to, to Gene and to, and to Chuck, and, and get their thoughts on this, but since I wrote most of this, I can honestly tell you, it's for information gathering, not to lead people in one direction or another. And, you know, I think part of maybe what we didn't understand the last time is that maybe we didn't ask enough of these questions, so, um, you know, we have one more chance to get this right, so.
But I, I should state that I'm not opposed to the survey. The information gathering is great. Um, I just, you know, just taking this, the wording of a survey can really influence how people answer questions.
And again, I-
And, and none of us are professional survey writers, so.
I get it.
The more thoughts we have on this, we might be able to change slightly wording that have a positive effect. Um, I did have to-
One more, Vanessa, so Andy had a-
So, so, I feel a little bit alike, the, I think it's the father and fiddle of the roof, on the one hand, on the, you know, to Vanessa's point, I, I, you know, we don't have a choice between how we split our town-school budget. So, you know, it's, it's one budget, it's one override. Why are we differentiating? On the other hand, it's good to know if there is a, uh, if we could communicate better and justify better spending on the town side or spending on the school side. If people aren't understanding why we're spending, why we're spending this amount of money on the school side, we need to do a better job as, as the school committee, we all need to do a better job. It informs how we inform the community, and how we go from there. On the other hand, involving the school committee would allow us to, as you suggested, to dig down deeper into, okay, they weren't pleased with, say, the municipal side, what is it they weren't pleased with? And where do we need to ask some harder questions? We can't do that on the school side, that's not our, so that would be a benefit to the, to having the school committee involved. On the other hand, this is a board of selectmen, ultim, you know, ultimately, the buck stops here. And, and so that's why I made the suggestion, you and Barry to sit down and then, you know.
I have no doubt, we're trying to get that done this week.
Question six, where we talked about the amount.
Yep.
I would vote yes, on an override, if the amount was only even or more likely. Um, there's no point of reference, so whether you have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar condo or you have a million-dollar home, these numbers are skewed. Because a five-hundred-dollar increase means different things, depending on your-
That's actually a really good point.
That's a very good point.
And, you know, you could rephrase that question to say, the average home worth six-hundred-thousand dollars.
And if that would be-
Or, you know, something like that, I mean, so.
Because that's how we gave out the information last time, was the, the thousand dollars was based on your average home of five-hundred thousand.
Correct.
And we were all thinking that when we wrote, or you wrote six, and we read it and said, yep, that's what the question was.
I actually think that's really, I think that's a really good-
That's a very good observation. We all were assuming that in the language.
Also, on two B, so how-
So fix it, Bob.
Point you told me. Uh, so two B, uh, as it reads here, it's-
Or not two B.
Yes.
Uh, answer L, fourth one down. Uh, I'm retired and on a fixed income. One of the things that this doesn't address, um, I, I have no issue with that question in and of itself, um, but it doesn't address those residents that are living paycheck to paycheck, that maybe aren't senior income, or that, that aren't senior residents.
Could you fix that by changing the and to an or?
Or maybe not fixed income, but somehow rephrasing it to address those people in town that maybe don't have as much disposable income, it might be hardship. And when we talk about collecting data, those residents should be taken.
So category one is I'm retired, and category two is, and- Category two's I'm on a fixed income. I guess, do we need to know you're retired?
Well, it's, maybe what you're really saying is there are people in town, and I know this is true, who are at their spending limit.
Financial hardship.
I mean, it's like, I have no more disposable income, um, and that's why I'd have to vote no.
Someone had an inversion.
Yeah.
It's a financial hardship.
Oh, okay, that's what I was saying.
That was in, it's got wordsmithed out in one of the reversions.
Because you, you know, and you don't have to be retired on a fixed income in order to be at your spending limit.
So if we had another letter offering there, which would say, I'm at my spending limit, would that satisfy?
We would just say, we did take it up completely, just say, you know, I'm suffering from financial hardship and I can't afford to pay in.
Yeah, I think that's the right answer, really.
That's right.
Swap it out.
Would be better, because what if you cross-reference it with the age bracket?
Yeah, you'll, you'll get the retired.
It might be the same answer, but it also captures the date of retirement.
I think the retired thought here came from the senior tax relief comment at the end. That's probably how it got-
That was a nice way to sneak that in there.
Yeah, good, good pitch.
I think that's how that happened.
Although I do think it's important to get that, that's one more message.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
One more way for us to let people be aware that there may be a solution to their big concern. I don't wanna vote for an override because I'm just making ends meet, but maybe they didn't really realize that there's a way to get a thousand dollars back, you know, out of the senior tax relief program. So I do think that you gotta, I mean, that, I, I clearly understand that that's a commercial message, but it's, I think it's a well-placed one for the purposes of what we're trying to do.
So maybe the solution there is add a different one where it's-
Yeah, I'd say add, rather than subtract.
Why don't we add a new letter L and say, um, what do we say?
I have financial har, that hardship, you know.
I'm having financial hardship.
Having a financial hardship and-
Cannot afford to pay in.
Cannot afford additional expenses. And that is, that has to be age-neutral, because it's an age-neutral kind of situation, frankly. I mean, frankly, it was, it was a lot more, I mean, I'm retired now, there was a lot of times when I was in my thirties where I was, had a lot less money to spend than I do on my fixed income today, you know? I mean, I think that's just a natural fact.
And then question five, um, I struggled with this one. Uh, this is the one that compares us to peer communities and whether our taxes are higher or lower. Where in my FinCom have, I definitely curious on this one, and my concern is, again, the point of reference is tough on this one, because depending on the community, it would be compared to home values, property, well, I-
I think, I, Bob added this question, and, and I think that the point of reference is really important, because it, it gives us a starting point of what people think their taxes are.
This is perception. This is a question all about perception, it's not about accuracy. It's knowing what you know today. Do you think that we're higher or lower, or I have no idea?
And since you, and you know the answer.
About Lexington, the average of our peers is the exact same as Reading for a single-family home. It's within ten thousand dollars.
Even though the values of the homes are higher.
Yes, absolutely.
Which is a driver around this question. It's something you certainly have to consider. I mean, you could have, the rates could be, could be the same, but the tax could be much higher, or the rate, our rate could be lower, you know, yet, I, there is a, you're not gonna get this one perfect, I don't think.
I will say, the, the wording on this one is tough to follow. I don't know if we can-
Five needs to look like six visually. I just have an-
You sorta gotta get it back, 'cause I think, Bob, what you were driving at is the average home again.
Yeah.
And so if you can pull that in, that may address the issue.
Yes, six has less.
Six is format exactly.
You know, if the average home in Lexington, for example, is worth twenty percent more, and the tax rates are the same, the tax, the taxes, physical taxes being paid to fund what's going on there are larger, you know, even though the rate, you know, even though our, you know, the rate might be smaller, if you follow what I'm saying, so.
It might make more sense to, yeah, make the person, you know, put them in a peer-community-average single-family home and say, how much more or less do you think you're paying there compared to Reading? Instead of Reading compared to someone else, you just move to an average peer community.
Just turn it around. You're, you're now living in the same house.
Living in a peer-community-average, do you think you're paying more or less taxes there?
Yeah, I, we wanna know what they think.
That's an easier way to ask the question.
I think so.
Do you wanna try to wordsmith that right now?
No, I'll figure that out.
Yeah, because that ultimately becomes a marketing discussion-
That's okay.
-in the fall and in the winter. If you know this information, if you know how people are thinking, and so that's why it's, it's gotta stay, it needs a little work, but, you know.
Okay, so we have a little bit of work to do here to pretty this out.
Well, while Bob's working on that, you guys go have your visit with Chuck and Gene and, you know, um- I, I don't know who's-
Chuck and Elaine?
Chuck and Elaine.
Chuck and Elaine.
I don't know about you, John, but in the interest of time and not having to wait another couple weeks to vote on this, I'm happy, uh-
I would put this in their hands. Is that where you're going? Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, we got some wordsmithing on six. The other ones, I think, are already done, but, or five, we already know, but we all know what five means, but I understand there's a better way to cast the question. So we'll, we'll set up a meeting this week. I'll tell you tomorrow and, uh, Thursday night, but we'll have to find some-
And then you'll let us know the best way to get people to take the survey.
In the meantime, Bob, can we, while that work is going on, can we in the background be moving towards a decision, and I think we need to leave that in your hands?
The electronics.
Is it survey monkey, who is it, you know, I mean?
I'll ask Jana.
And the Survey Monkey has really worked well. I've used it in many different organizations.
I know Rec has used it extensively.
Was it from Cross Tab?
Yes.
And that, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'll ask.
Thank you for, everyone in the audience, for your comments. We take them all seriously. I hope that's evident. Some cases, we may not agree, but most cases, I think, the beauty part of what you've done is you've walked in with new eyes. We're seeing the same words over and over again. They mean something to us. You're seeing it for the first time, and you're saying, "Hey, I'm tripping over this sentence," or, "Hey, I don't understand this." So that's the value of having another set of eyes. I appreciate that. We'll get it done. It'll take us another few days. We'll get it done. Any other comments before we move on? Thank you again for your help. Okay. See, the next topic...
You should have a motion on the change in officer.
Yep, you're back up.
Yeah. I need to, excuse me.
All right. Want to take, want to take a two-minute?
Yeah, that would be great.
Bio break?
Yeah, okay.